Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon. We are going to call to order the meeting, a regular meeting of the Delmar College Board of Regents at 1:02 PM. It's Tuesday, December 9th. I'm going to establish a quorum for our meeting. Regent Kruhl, Regent Kelly, Dr. Turner, Regent Everett, Dr. Adami, Regent Garza, Regent Loeb. I'm Carol Scott. We have a quorum and can conduct business. Would you please join us in a moment of silence? I'm going to ask Regent Loeb to lead us in our pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please join us as we read our Delmar College Vision Statement. "Delmar College empowers our communities to achieve their dreams." Thank you all for being here today. Delmar College is live streaming our audio and video from our meeting on the college's website in real time with exception to portions of the meeting as may be considered closed session by statute. We do have an opportunity for general public comment for items not on the agenda, and we do have one individual who has signed up for a public comment, Carl Yowell. Is Mr. Yowell here? Did you want to speak now, or were you going to speak on...
For an agenda item.
For an agenda item. Great. I will... Is it for the Professor Emeritus? I will call you up at that time. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone here for general public comment? Seeing none, we do have a number of special things that are occurring today, and we are going to take some things a little bit out of order, so bear with us as I kind of move through the agenda. But the first item on our agenda for today is a special recognition of Ms. Lenora Keyes, who is our Executive Vice President and Chief Operating Officer, and she will be retiring. So I am going to read a proclamation that is being presented to Ms. Keyes on behalf of the Board of Regents. Then we're going to ask Regents to make comments, and I have to actually go exchange this because I have the wrong one in my hand. So Ms. Pettis, would you give me the one that you have?
I put one at your desk, and I put the wrong one at your desk. Thank you. Sorry, I'm back.
I apologize about that. Lenora had such hopes of being all professional and doing everything according to plan. But I'm going to read this proclamation and then ask Regents for comments, and Dr. Eskimia, of course, to make comments, and then we have a couple of maybe surprises for you as well. "Lenora Keyes will retire in January 2026 as Delmar College's Executive Vice President and Chief Operating Officer, capping a distinguished 43-year career at the college. Her contributions to the college cannot be overstated. Her vision and dedication have left an indelible mark on Delmar College and the coastal bend. From her beginnings as an instructor in 1982 to her exemplary service as Executive Vice President and Chief Operating Officer, Lenora's journey has been one of extraordinary leadership, resilience, and purpose. She has guided the college's growth, strengthens its partnerships with students, employers, and communities, and expanded opportunities that truly change lives. She has served the college in various roles, including, and I'm sure I have not gotten them all here, but including: Professor, Chair of the Department of Business Administration, Executive Director of Strategic Planning and Assessment, Executive Director of Strategic Planning and Workforce Development, Vice President of Workforce Development and Strategic Initiatives, Interim Provost, Vice President of Instruction and Student Services, Vice President and Chief Financial Officer, and currently Executive Vice President, Chief Operating Officer." Did I miss some, Lenora?
I think there's an interim CFO in there somewhere.
Probably.
I know there was.
"Lenora also led and chaired the Strategic Planning Committee for numerous years and co-chaired the Committee for COVID Response and Recovery. Her impact can be seen in every corner of the institution, from reimagined academic and workforce programs to the transformative Osso Creek campus made possible through multimillion-dollar bonds, to world-class industrial pilot plant complex on the Windward Campus. Each achievement reflects her unwavering commitment to positioning Delmar College as a leader in meeting the evolving needs of our students and industry alike. Lenora has been instrumental in numerous other large-scale projects, including the college's Future Workforce Development Center in Aransas County. She spearheaded many of the college's critical accreditation efforts with the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Commission on Colleges. Beyond the college, Lenora has been a tireless champion for the community. Her nearly 25 years of service on the Driscoll Children's Hospital Board, her leadership with the Corpus Christi Regional Economic Development Corporation, and her work with industry partners have helped move the entire region forward. The Board of Regents wishes Lenora all the best in her next chapter and with deep gratitude for your years of service to Delmar College and the students of South Texas. Issued this 9th day of December 2025." I invite members of our Board of Regents to make comments if you would so like to. Dr. Adami, starting with you.
Lenora, what can I say? You know, you've inspired me so much. You know, you're an inspiration. You've been an inspiration to me as well as the college. But because of your advocacy in the community, and it's not only focused in one area, I've seen it expand through all aspects. You've been a great help to me. You've been a great help to the college and university, and, you know, we'll never forget you, you know? And so, the only thing I could say is, you know, we're gonna... I'm going to miss you. Of course, the board's going to miss you, but I'll always be of service to you if ever you need something, you know? So just call out on me and, in whatever matter I could help you with my organizations that I'm involved with, and, again, you know, we love you. Going to miss you.
Thank you. Beyond words, thank you.
Regent Everett?
Your list of accomplishments, I think, make it clear that you're not just one of the foremost female leaders in our community, but one of the most foremost leaders, period. We are so fortunate to have you here, and you certainly have all of our admiration on a professional level. You always conduct yourself with this rare mix of professionalism and authenticity, which I wish existed in so many other areas and with so many other people. But we have just been so lucky to be able to work with you. And on a personal level, I am so grateful to know you. You have helped me in some of the most difficult times of my life personally, and I know I'm not alone in that. And I am just, while so grateful for your service, so unbelievably excited for what's to come for you, and just wish you all the happiness in the world, and thank you so much for your service.
Thank you, Libby, very much. Thank you.
Regent Loeb?
You've been at this school since I was a year old.
Ooh, David!
Next.
Now, that came perspective.
Well, and you're probably the single most... You're the person most responsible for me being here. When I was on council, I remember you came, working on the process tech and the truck driving expansion, and it was such a positive experience that after I stopped doing council because I had kids and they got old enough to be in school, I thought, well, you know, I'd like to get involved more seriously again in the community, and I thought, what can I do that will feel good and be useful? And I thought of workforce development here because of you, because you made that experience so positive and so successful for anybody. And I remember after we did it, meeting people in the community and asking them what they did, and they, you know, they would say, oh, I did the process tech program at Delmar, and now I'm an operator at a refinery. And just that feeling of being able to know that something you did actually impacted a real person. And I hope for so many years that you've done this, that you've gotten that feeling often, because you have had an incredible impact on families in this community. You know, you were one of the people that has brought thousands of people out of generational poverty, and so whatever we can do to help you in your future missions, whatever they are, we're happy to, because you are a leader of this community. Thank you so much for doing what you've done with your career.
Thank you very much. I'm without words, y'all. Just thank you. Thank you.
Regent Garza?
I'm sure I met you before I was able to serve on the Economic Development Corporation, but I remember the experience I had serving with you on the EDC, and I just remember the countless projects that you brought forth and the ones that you supported, and, again, the impact that you've made on the community. And quite frankly, most of the time, you don't accept a compliment without returning one back. Whether we deserve it or not, you still return... You return a compliment back, and so, again, that shows that you don't just eat it all up and become a bigger version of yourself. But, again, I just, I really appreciate all the contribution you've made to the community. I think that you've probably articulated our vision for Delmar and how we can help the industry in the best way possible so that they could, in turn, turn around and be partners with Delmar College. I'm going to miss you, that's for sure. I really like our personal interaction in and out of meetings, bumping into each other at different community functions, and so, again, I am extremely grateful for all the contributions you made to the community and to the region as a whole, because, again, we not only serve this community, but we also serve the region. So, again, thank you so much for everything you've done. Good luck with your future and your endeavors and all the things that are going to come your way that you certainly deserve. And so, again, love you, Lenora, always. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Regent Kelly?
Lenora, it'd be hard to pile on with all your professional accolades that we heard in the proclamation and that my partners have been discussing. And there is no question, Delmar will be diminished without you, and you will be missed. I didn't know you well before, but I did know you because I worked for Mr. Keyes, still Mr. Keyes to me. And so, I got to know you a little bit there, but I think what I would like to add is my personal observations, not just your professional acumen, but you are indeed a wonderful person, and we are going to miss you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Dr. Turner?
Yep. You will be irreplaceable, and all I can say is ditto to what everyone else has said. You know, when I got on the board five years ago, I appreciate you so much because I had a learning curve, and no judgment, you answered all my questions, you led me to what I needed to do and explained things to me where I can understand and be productive up here, and I so much appreciate that. And not only that, but all your contacts and all your relationships in the community, I'm not sure how we move forward without you. I mean, you are everywhere. You're a Rockport, you're everywhere, and you understand the needs of the community, and you understand the needs of our students and our staff and the college as a whole. And I just, you know, where do we go from here? And I am so thankful that you are going to stay on as a consultant, because I don't know how we, you know, and there's this, again, you're irreplaceable and you're so badly needed, but I do understand the need for retirement and that next journey of life, you know? You've worked 43 years. I commend you on that. I mean, oh, my gosh. So congratulations, and I still look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Regent Kruhl?
Well, being the last on this, it's kind of hard to say anything new and different from what my cohorts have said, but, and I've only been here probably the shortest time of anybody, but I really admire your personal and professional leadership and what you've done for Delmar College over the years. It's going to be very difficult to fill your shoes, and I echo that. I'm glad you're staying around to guide your replacement and keep everybody else in line over the... As time goes forward. So good luck to you, Lenora, and best to you in your retirement.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I'm going to ask Dr. Eskimia to say a few words on behalf of the staff.
Regent Kruhl, you looked at me when you said, "Keep him in line." You were talking... You looked at me. I don't know if you were watching your body like that.
If the shoe fits, sir.
I'll take it. Speaking of that, Lenora, you know, when David was a ripe old age of one, I was 13, and 26 years later, I came to Delmar College, and our dear friend August Alfonso introduced us. He says, "Hey, rookie president, if you need someone to help you through these things that you're about to embark upon, you're going to need the help of one person." And he said, "Write this down, Lenora Keyes." And I said, "Okay, K-E-Y-S." Okay, because that's how little I knew of you. And, you know, we jumped into all kinds of things, obviously. These titles, this was not an exhaustive list, as Chair Scott indicated. There were many, 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 many other things, including my personal counselor at times and academic advisor at times, and all kinds of things. You're such a mentor to so many. I'm sorry?
My conscience.
My conscience, my moral compass at times, and so forth. We've talked about everything. We've been through so many things together. You know, life has brought all the things that it's brought, including hurricanes and all kinds of things, and we've gotten through all those kinds of things. But at the end of the day, your years of service here are, I mean, incomparable in so many ways. And you're right, Regent Turner, there is no replacing, and we won't try. That is not possible, not in our lifetime. And so, but thanks on behalf of the entire college. I know the team that is behind you, all thank you for all the things that you've done over the years. I know Augie and I count on you for countless things, and I'm speaking a little for him in this regard, but you've guided us when there were no other answers and no other thoughts, where you said, "Well, let's call Lenora. Let's see what we can put together with Lenora. She'll get us out of this," and you have so many times. But, again, on behalf of the entire community, the Delmar College community and the greater South Texas community, we thank you for your love and devotion to this institution. You've taught us a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Beyond words, thank you all.
So one of the things that... Go ahead.
Oh, I'm just going to bring that up? Okay. Sorry, I was getting a little lost in my thoughts there, but so I'm going to ask Matthew Busby from the foundation to come up and give us a little announcement about a special program going on at the foundation. Matthew?
All right. Well, thank you so much. I just, I will keep it brief, and I hate to stand with my back to Lenora and the group of people, many of whom are here to hear and to participate with the celebration of her. Someone in our community who's a big fan of Lenora Keyes and her professionalism and personalism in so many ways, has created two scholarships in her name. These scholarships will be the Lenora Keyes Endowed Scholarship and the Lenora Keyes Scholarship for Rockport Workforce Students. And so, the foundation at Delmar College will manage those and to really carry on her legacy of impact today and moving forward. Anyone is welcome, both on the dais and outside in the community, to make a gift of any size, whether it's through your IRA, stock, donor advice fund, credit card, whatever. That's my job, okay? So, long story short, I will end with this. For those who want to take notes, just look at the foundation's website, delmar.edu. I sound like a radio ad. Delmar.edu/foundation, or if you want to go straight to it, it's give.delmar.edu/lenorakes. There you're going to see her picture, you're going to read about her, and be able to give if you feel compelled. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you, Matthew, for that. We wanted to do this, yes. We know there's going to be an opportunity for reception, but we do have one more little thing, but we wanted to do this at this meeting as opposed to bringing you back in February because we know you're going to be traveling. But this was your last, this was your last board meeting with us. So I'm going to ask the rest of the Regents to walk down to the dais while David tells us about what this gift is.
Wow.
So Lenora just pointed at me because when I invited myself on our adventure to Rockport to sort out our building code issues, Lenora and I were sitting in Rockport City Hall, and she was looking at this painting, and I asked her if she liked it, and she said yes. So as, this is our gift to you, is the painting that you love so much.
Well, thank you beyond words.
This is amazing. This is amazing. It's beautiful painting. It looks like, well, I'm not going to pretend to know that, but it's probably is. The hood of this painting represents Lenora's, you know, home turf. She was in Aransas County Senate, county, yeah? Probably use that term because that's what she uses all the time. And this really represents the coastal environment that she was born and raised in, and is continuing to help raise, you know, locals in their educational endeavors.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. God.
Listen, it's a sign of...
If I can catch my breath. Amazing, first of all. Thank you all very, very much. Regent Scott, you blew me away with your resolution and the words. Very, very touching. Thank you so much. And Dr. Eskimia, I never told you, but I was actually in Chico shopping the day you called for the job. And so, I'm always very, very thankful that I responded, because it's been a lifelong work and most meaningful working together. You've really given me every opportunity, and I can't thank you enough. It's, I think I wrote, "It's seldom in life do you get to do what you really want to do and enjoy every day, but to be able to do it with steadfast friends is even more meaningful." And I've had the great pleasure of being able to do that. And to be able to touch lives is a true gift, and we all have it. Everybody in this room, everybody in this room, you touch lives every day. And so, it's really the fact that we can all do this together that makes it meaningful. I can't thank each of you enough. I bragged on our board the other night, someone, I'll tell you, it was an applicant thinking about coming here and applying for a big job, and I said, "One of the best things you can do is to know that our Board of Regents and our vice and our president and our leadership team and everyone together back you up and have the same mission in mind, and that's to serve students in this community." And so, what you've done and what you do every day makes such a difference. But on a personal level, I'm just, I'm blown away. I'm touched. I don't know, I can't tell you enough. Y'all have been such a big part of my life, and I love you all for it, and I love everybody out here. I've worked so much with every one of you, and over the years, through thick and thin, and many, many thicks, and so, it's all important. I wouldn't have this scholarship without Andy Lerman, my fiancee. And I'm thrilled that Andy's here with me today to just, to share this. But beyond words, thank you, and if I left anything out, I'm sorry, but all of you, you mean the world to me. And the reason I love pelicans is because when I come back in life, I'm going to be a brown pelican that dives in the water. And it's not the pretty kind, it's the spunky kind that gets in the, you know, gets in the water and eats the fish. So that's the symbolism of the pelican. And I think here at Delmar, we're the workers and the doers and touch people's lives, and we're all the pelicans, so. Thank y'all. Beyond words. And for the surprise, David, that was amazing. You can go on any visit with me now out in the public, I promise. Yeah. So, thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Lenora.
Appreciate it.
We have two more very special recognitions that we are, one recognition and one action item that we are going to move immediately following. So I hope that those of you will stick around as we continue to recognize what makes Delmar College just an excellent place to be. So I'm going to ask Dr. Halkum to come up and recognize two of our biotech students who have won some special, special presentation recognition.
Hey, Megan, could you come forward? Kristin and Dr. Zhang?
Undergraduate research is an important component of a student's education if they're majoring in the sciences. This involves a mentored hands-on approach to develop skills that they need for graduate school or in their career in science. We've worked for more than 15 years here at Delmar College to provide undergraduate research experiences in biology and biotechnology. Dr. Daisy Zhang, professor of biotechnology, has mentored numerous students. She's developed relationships with other entities and performed research with students during the summers. Her work ethic and dedication to the students is exemplary. Through her NSF grant, two of the students did research and presented the results of that research at the National Science Foundation Advanced Technology Education Conference in Washington, DC. I was fortunate to also go along on that trip, and I can tell you, the students did an outstanding job. First of all, we have Megan O'Shaughnessy, who, her work is entitled "Neutralization of Crotalus Aatrox Venom by Extracellular Vessicles Isolated from Sea Aatrox Plasma and Idelphus Virginiana Serum." So what does that mean? Okay. So basically, she is examining whether the extracellular vesicles, we call EVs, found in the blood of the western diamondback rattlesnake and the opossum could protect these animals from rattlesnake venom. Her results show that the EVs from the snake and the opossum did weaken the venom, making it less able to break down fibrinogen, which is necessary for blood clotting. Megan is a biotechnology and biology major who graduated from Kingwood High School and the Texas Connections Academy in 2022. She stated that her favorite experience from the trip was actually presenting this research to other scientists. Megan's research is a collaboration with the National Toxins Research Center in Texas A&amp;M Kingsville. Elda Sanchez, who's been the director for many years, has worked with many of our students. And by the way, our students do not handle venomous snakes, just in case you're worried about it, they don't, but they do work with some of the extracts, et cetera. Megan will introduce her mentor, who she invited to come, but I'd like to hear from Megan for just a moment. Megan? Megan.
Hi, I'm Megan O'Shaughnessy. I would like to start today by thanking Daisy and the Delmar College Biotechnology Program for all the opportunities I've received. I would also like to thank Dr. Elda Sanchez and Dr. Strovenot for helping me and mentoring me in A&amp;M Kingsville. I would like to thank my mom for being here and for always supporting me. I would also like to thank the board for recognizing me today. Thank you.
So do you have questions about the snake venom? She can answer.
I am just so glad that you were reading that portion and not me.
But is that mom over there with the camera? We're, I'm sorry, I couldn't see, I couldn't see you back there. I just want to recognize you. Thank you for being here.
And her mentor is back here too, from the toxins center.
There you go.
Thank you for being here. Thank you.
And we have Kristin Waddell, and she was quantifying Class 1 Integra and Integrase gene to understand anthropogenic environmental pollution in Baffin Bay. In other words, it focused on, you know, the issues that we experience with environmental pollution at Baffin Bay. Baffin Bay and the creeks that flow into it are used for ranching, farming, fishing, bird watching, and other outdoor activities. Her work indicates that this Integra gene is a good clue for spotting pollution caused by people and their activities. Adding this gene to water testing studies helps scientists better understand how fecal population and antibiotic-resistant bacteria spread in the environment. So I think some of you that go out fishing, et cetera, near Baffin Bay would be very interested in the research that she's doing. Yes, Dr. Eskamia?
I've been following it. I watched you in the news and I kind of, yeah, no, I've been watching both of them because rattlesnakes and Baffin Bay, they all go together anyway. They really do.
Kristin is a biotechnology and biology major at Delmar College, graduating from Veterans Memorial High School in 2023. And she also enjoyed very much the conversation with the researchers at the meeting in Washington, DC. She did collaboration with TAMI CC, Dr. Jeffrey Turner, who has worked with many of our students over the years. These two students are examples of what our undergraduate research program does and the great work that Daisy Zhang does. And I believe, Kristin, your mother is here too, right? Come forward.
Thank you for being here. First, I would like to thank Delmar College and the Biotechnology Program for providing me with the funding and the opportunities that I've been given. And I would like to thank Dr. Jeffrey Turner and Dr. Daisy Zhang and Nora Bleth at TAMI CC for their support in this project. And personally, I would like to thank my mom, Carol, and my boyfriend, Jao. She's also here, their personal support throughout this project. And lastly, I would like to thank the board for this recognition.
Thank you so much for letting us recognize these two wonderful students.
Absolutely. Thank you both very much for being here. Thank you for your dedication to science. We know that there's great things in your future. Dr. Zhang, thank you so much for the work that you do with our students time and time again. You and Dr. Heather before you, and I mean, there's such a legacy in that program, and we want to thank you for the work that you do in teaching and mentoring our students. Congratulations, ladies. Well, well done. All right, so we are going to move action item number four up on the agenda so that we have an opportunity to continue with some phenomenal accolades. We have the opportunity to hear a recommendation from our faculty and take action on naming Dr., excuse me, Michael Kim Frederick as Professor Emeritus. And so Dr. Halkum is going to present that for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kim, could you come forward? There you are. You're over there. Okay. I am pleased today to present Michael Kim Frederick to you for consideration of Emeritus status. Emeritus status, as we know, is a distinction that is reserved to those faculty who have shown distinguished service, significant contributions to higher education, meritorious teaching, and special honors. So this is a very important honor that we have today. Your packet contains the policies and covering the eligibility to be under consideration for Emeritus status and the process that we do follow. Eligibility for the award of Emeritus status includes distinction in areas of faculty fundamental responsibilities, including professional practice, educational growth, institutional and community service. Your packet lists all of those areas and how he met those qualifications. We have a table here that you see that goes to every policy, and it tells how he met the policy requirements. And I will read a resolution which really basically summarizes the table and his CV. So you also have his CV, which has additional information about his education history. So if you do approve Emeritus status, he will be granted privileges as being listed in the college catalog, the college directory, mailing list, to name a few. And there are other things as well. Our faculty Emeritus consideration was recommended by the department chair, several faculty, the divisional dean, the faculty council, and myself, the chief academic officer, following our policies and procedures. I'm going to read a resolution to you that summarizes his accomplishments at the institution. Mr. Michael Kim Frederick, professor of drama, served as an exemplary educator among his peers at the college for 36 years. During his tenure at the college, Mr. Frederick provided distinguished contributions with his artistic and scholarly work and leadership for the art and drama department. He is commended for his commitment to our students, his colleagues, the college, the community, and surrounding area, and most notably, the field of theater education. Mr. Frederick taught a variety of drama classes, directed over 50 theater productions, and developed new courses, among which supported the first generation of dual-credit students at the college. He was awarded the Community College Educator of the Year in 2017 by the Texas Association of Theater Educators and remains involved in educational theater as an official UIL One Act Play adjudicator. He served on the city's Arts and Cultural Commission and directed a team of community leaders in 2003, which won Corpus Christi the coveted designation of All-American City. Mr. Frederick served as drama program coordinator for over two decades and then as Art and Drama Department Chair. He was instrumental in growing the drama program through program assessment and improvement, which led to the college's national accreditation status by the National Association of Schools of Theater. He also championed the addition of the new art and drama facilities, including teaching and production support spaces and the beautiful Sue Finley Theater, which opened in 2012. He continues to give back to the drama program through the Kim Frederick Endowed Drama Scholarship Fund, which benefited his first recipient in spring of 2025. So I now ask the board if they can acknowledge and extend their appreciation to Michael Kim Frederick and if you could approve him for Emeritus status.
Thank you very much. Dr. Adami makes the motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Turner. Do we have any comment on this motion?
I know I have a comment. I'm going to start. I think I first met Kim when I moved here 40-something years ago in community theater work, probably in melodrama. I'm not, I know you directed those for a number of years. And so have known Kim for a long, long time. And when he came and directed, made reference to the team that did the All-America City presentation, we were having trouble getting the mayor and the county judge and police chief and different folks to focus in on a message. Everybody wanted to say, you know, wanted their program to be the highlight of the presentation. And we figured out very quickly, we needed somebody outside of the politics to come in and be our director. And so he worked with staff to really hone in the presentation, because I want to say we had like seven minutes. I mean, it was something really pretty incredibly small to represent the application for All America City. And to watch Kim Frederick in his professional and humorous and direct style to tell the mayor and the county judge and the police chief and others where to stand, what to do, when to speak, nope, that's not good enough, you need to do this. I mean, we had a, it was, yeah, Lloyd Neil. Yeah. All I have to say is those of you who worked with Lloyd, but actually, Kim did a masterful job and one of many examples, but I just, I just can't think of anybody more deserving. And personally, I just appreciate your friendship and watching you in your professional career over these years. And Kent, just wanted to say congratulations. Are there any other board members who'd like to make comment? I know we do have one, oh, you want to make comment?
I do. I don't usually, but I just have to tell a quick story in the early days. 2008, 2009, and it was, it was a contentious time and everything was just kind of getting settled. And this rookie guy showed up and I was, and Kim got really frustrated with me in a meeting. It was very, very candid. It was about the issue and so forth. And right afterwards, I'm trying to remember, it was either Bob Long or Chuck McKinney or one of those guys afterwards, it was after a faculty council meeting, and very startled and got upset about something and moved on. And I said, "God, my, that guy's upset." "Don't worry, don't worry, he's a theater guy. That's just an act." I said, "There was no acting going on there? That dude meant what he said. And if he did, if he was acting, give him an Oscar because that guy really meant, your passion for this place is what I'm getting at." You taught me early on, it was natural for me because I was extremely passionate, you know, having been a student here and those kinds of things. But I remember that day, but you have been such an inspiration. You've been, you've been a guide for so many, a mentor for so many. Your spirit and your love for theater and everything, you know, all things arts, all things Delmar resonates all throughout the community, Kim. It still does, it always will. I always hug you now I see you. And we didn't hug in the beginning, and now we do. That's a great thing. And I'm going to look forward to more hugs in the future, brother. Appreciate you.
Before we vote, we do have one individual who would like to make public comment on this action item. So I'm going to invite Mr. Yau to come forward.
You've got the ankle bracelet off.
Kim Frederick in a nutshell. Thank you, Regent Scott, I appreciate it. I'm Carl Yau, I'm on the drama faculty. I have, I don't know if it's a distinction of working probably more closely and for a longer duration than anybody in this room with Kim Frederick. We worked together for 29 years. And hope I can get through this. For about 10 years, he was the technical director and designer, which is a physically debilitating task. And he directed 50 shows, but designed probably 150 shows, which means he's in the shop, cutting wood, supervising students, lifting, hoisting and stuff. Our great friend at Texas A&amp;M at Kingsville, David Deacon, said, "You never see any old technical directors," which is why Kim became an administrator. But it cost him something of his health, I know firsthand. It cost him lots and lots of time. The theater discipline, we often spend 60, 70, 80 hours a week on campus. We're there long after everyone is gone with the students. And I know that's been at the cost of not only his health, but his family, his kids, Zach and Kelsey and Caitlin. He instigated fundraisers, scholarship performances that he performed in, a whole bunch of them, I won't list them now, but we called them Lucy schemes because they were like Lucille Ball. They were just so crazy, they just might work. And when Kim suggested it, we were like, "Okay, we'll do it." And so he inspired all of us, his colleagues, to put in the extra time beyond our teaching load and our typical production loads to come and do this in service to the college. So he was the Pied Piper in our married band. One thing I got to say, and with all due respect to Dr. Eskamia, Kim's corner was probably the highlight of convocation many years. And for those of you who don't know, he and our late, great friend Gerard Mignoys of Delmar TV would prowl the Delmar facilities and do man-on-the-street interviews with faculty and staff. And they know he was going to make fun of them and gig them a little bit, and they took it anyway, which goes, which goes to the thing that I learned most about Kim is that, is to meet people where they are. What a great skill that is. Whether it's a student, the parent of a student, the child of a student, an administrator, a colleague, a patron, a benefactor, Kim has this marvelous ability to meet people where they are. This college has a great legacy of recognizing service. If you look at Heritage Campus, look at the names, Coles, Venner's, Heldenfeld's, Anzeldua, Creighton, Garcia, St. Clair, Richardson, Wolf, Bartlett, Finley, Kane. These are not donors. These are people who gave the minutes and hours and days and years of their lives in service to this institution and its community. And Kim is amongst that number. The minutes and hours and days and years of his life to us, all of us. And so I hope that for a lifetime of his service, that this board sees fit to recognize Kim, my dear friend, as Professor Emeritus. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment on this item? I'm not sure how you could follow Mr. Yau, but just. Board of Regents, all those in favor of naming Kim Frederick as Professor Emeritus, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. That motion passes unanimously. Mr. Frederick?
Such kind words from a guy I never could stand. Appreciate that. I didn't expect that. I looked up Emeritus, it's Latin for old and wrinkly. I appreciate that. Two quick stories. In 1979, you'll appreciate this, 1979, I was welding a pipeline in Mobile Bay. I have pay stubs that I was making $1,000 a week in 1979. 96 hours a week we were working. So it was overtime. And I stayed only about a month because I had $150 scholarship to A&amp;M CC, CCSU, which will always be Corpus Christi State University to me. The night before, I go out for a drink with all the guys that are working as welders, many knew my dad, who had worked for the company, and they just can't believe that I'm leaving a $1,000 a week job for $150 scholarship. And I knew at the time that's what my passion was, and that's what I needed to do. And I have tried to live up to that ever since. To this day, I made the right decision. I'll never turn back. I was a student at Delmar years ago and then was lucky enough to finish my degree in town and then to work for and with the amazing Sue Finley, who I miss each and every day. So I have been known to have many relationships over the years. It's true. A lot of good ones, mostly good ones. I'm in a wonderful one right now. Till the end of the day, who knows what happens after this? But my best relationship was Delmar College. It really was. I get emotional hearing Carl talk. I worked with the best faculty around. We were at the music department when I first got here, and they couldn't stand us. But we loved them, and they loved us in time. And then we switched, we got switched over to art and drama, and it was the greatest decision. We have flourished. I hope that each and every one of you, you're all very wonderful people, and I hope that we all see behind or ahead of the curve on what is a major of consequence or a major of value. The majors that our students want to study is of consequence. It is of value. And so I hope, I love- I hope I love each and every one of you because of what you do for the college. And most amazing experience of my life. I am so blessed. And this is a great honor, and I am thrilled that you saw fit to do this today. I appreciate it. Thank you.
When we talk about a culture of caring and a culture of dedication and a culture of commitment to this institution and to our students and to the community at large, what better examples than we have just seen in these last three presentations? I would love to just adjourn the meeting right now and not deal with any of the business side of what we have to do today, because this has been just so incredibly heartwarming and what little we as a Board of Regents can do to support that kind of quality work we pledge to do. Because this is, you, one reason why we love these recognitions so much, because it helps, it helps us remember every meeting, why we are here and why we're called to do what we do. So on behalf of the Board of Regents, congratulations, Lenore. Congratulations to our outstanding students and to Dr. Zhang and to Kim, to Mr. Frederick for this recognition. Again, I can't think of a better way to talk about what great things Delmar College has, does, and will continue to do in this community. Thank you so much. But we do have business we have to do today, so we're gonna move on to our college president's report, and he's got some things to share with us.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just really quickly, to the newer, to Delmar College employees that are here watching, this is what happens. This is what, this is the bar right here. These two recognitions were just so much, such an honor to take a part in. And I'm hoping, I know y'all are watching. I know everyone's watching. So starting on November 12th, I conducted a meeting. It was a, it was a fun pizza with the students, pizza with the president kind of opportunity at Oso Creek Campus. And I was able to get a lot of good candor and candid feedback and so forth from our students, from a group of students. And I think we had about 60-plus students come in and out, which was a great showing. That was a lot of pizza. And a lot of good information. I collected the information. I have notes, actionable notes, that I'm gonna take to staff meeting this week and so forth. So to the staff who put that together, Beverly and others, thank you. To the students, thank you. And to the team, get ready. I'm gonna share that information with everybody day after tomorrow. On November 15th, we held the Viking Fest at Winward Campus. And it started off with a 5K run, I think. I think it was 5K, 3K, 5K, 5K. It was overwhelmingly successful. I think they had, how many runners were there? Eight hundred something, more or less, Jason? Thank you. Thanks to everyone who put that together. We had the, we had the Fourth Annual Dia de los Muertos welding competition going on. We had vendors, we had food. I'll tell you what, my wife and I sat in a shade tree and got some of that lemonade and just enjoyed people's company throughout the day. And I don't think we moved for about an hour and a half, just to, it was that lemonade. It was my wife and I and the bumblebees chasing the lemonade. It was, it was wonderful. It was a wonderful day. Thanks to everyone who did that. The students who received awards for the welding competition, watching the kids come across the running, the finish line, and adults alike. It was just a wonderful, wonderful day. And thank you to all who participated there. Thank you, Chair Scott, for joining my wife and I and taking a tour and grabbing a lemonade with us. It was, it was a wonderful afternoon. On the 18th was the Second Annual Superintendent Symposium. Thanks to Dr. Leonard Rivera and Mr. Gorrado Garcia, our superintendent in residence here for arranging that. That was a, that was one of the best performances the college has put together for a group of integral and extricable partners as superintendents and ISD leaders of various, various positions out there. It was wonderfully executed. And I think, Mr. Garcia, you said it best the other day, when those students were there talking about their experience, when those welding students were there and talking about their experience and the other recipients of dual credit instruction, when they were there kind of giving their testimony to the superintendents, nothing resonated more. Again, it was a very powerful meeting. We look forward to the next. That was a world-class presentation. Look forward to that happening again and supporting those efforts. And thanks to all the superintendents, administrators, and leadership, various people of leadership throughout the school districts for attending. The following day, it was very early morning, back in the same room, was the West Osso ISD State of the District. And we were, we were always proud to host that opportunity. And again, another powerful testimony of a school district that is just in the heart of this college district. And it was extremely well-attended, student performances and the like. It was just thanks to the West Osso ISD Foundation for doing all that they did. And to our staff now here at Delmar College, thank you for supporting that wonderful gathering. And later on that afternoon, we zipped on over to another state of. This was a state of the university there in Kingsville, at Texas A&amp;M University of Kingsville, where Dr. Robert Villa presented his forecast for the college and a little bit of retrospective and a lot of prospective initiatives that are going on, again, at one of our area wonderful universities. Again, another extricable partner in education. We were glad to be there. We had a big team, and they know Delmar College means that we aim to partner and send as many students to javelina country. Right, Regent? Scott should go hugs. Chair Scott is an alum. And then two more. I have, I'm gonna add one more quick one, but on December 12th was, hold on. Yep, I'm sorry. That's coming. I'm like, wait a minute, I'm getting lost here. Okay, so fall commencement will be coming, December, I mean, yeah, December 12th. We look forward to presenting a big group of graduates as they walk across. So we look forward that we have a keynote speaker who's a student. I don't know her name just yet, but everybody who shows up will find out when you get there. How about that? Jeff, do we have a name of the student?
That's Melissa. She's a nursing student.
All right. So one of our very own students will be a keynote speaker. So we're looking forward to that. Just really quickly, yesterday, I, myself, let me see, Ms. Bettes, Chair Scott, Regents Croll, and Loeb attended the first round of the Viking Academy whereby we joined in with the college relations team and were presented with the Viking Way and its core tenants and so forth, and how we might improve our approach here at the college and so forth. So we were glad to attend. And I got my, my little Viking helmet pin as a proud graduate. I got a certificate, as did the Regents, and thank you all for putting that together. We look forward to the Viking Academy being proliferating across the college to really, again, inspire, to bring them into the spirit of being a Viking through the Viking Way. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Eskamia. Any questions? Seeing none, we are moving on to our staff reports. And our first one is going to be our Delmar College Foundation update. And while Mr. Busby is coming forward to do that, I wanted to give recognition to Chairman Sandra Alvarez and members of the Foundation Board who are in attendance today. I think Matthew's gonna introduce them, but I'm gonna ask you to stand up as we get started. If you're a Foundation Board member, would you stand up and please be recognized for your efforts?
I think a couple stepped out.
Sandra, we got a couple that stepped out.
She'll be right back.
I know Mr. Legamaro was here. Sandra's over there.
Is she?
No.
We had several, due to timings, we had several trustees need to leave.
I'm so sorry about that. They were here over lunch with us, and we appreciate the leadership that they provide and know that what an integral partner the foundation is to our work. So, Mr. Busby, take it away.
Awesome. There we go. So really, the three presentations just prior summarizes Delmar College Foundation's work. Actually, I could not have planned it, and I didn't research today's agenda better than to really envision exactly that. We started with Lenore Keys with staff excellence, right? We looked at faculty with how they instruct and how they support our students. And then we also looked at two of our students and how they achieved academic, not just entry into Delmar, but success as they're staying here, they're achieving success, and we're positioning them for the future. That, right now, I could just, in my presentation, summarizes why Delmar College, Board of Regents Chair Ed Cortez, Dr. Cortez, created this foundation in '83, and why for the last 41 years, we have a volunteer board, the Board of Trustees, with Drew Jones and several other folks. And while we have a staff invested in by the college, supporting faculty, supporting staff, and supporting students in program excellence. And so that, pretty much every single thing that the foundation division and as a separate legal entity, everything that we do ties into one of those three things, or we just don't do it. All right? And with the first, I want to emphasize particularly, because Drew is here, but also mainly because it's absolutely true, is the first pecking order of what we do is student success, as demonstrated by scholarships. So with that in mind, I'm gonna run through some of the details here of Delmar College Foundation's annual update to this board. I report on a monthly basis to my board as serving as the liaison, the executive director of the Delmar College Foundation, a separate legal entity. Some of these things I repeat, although you know, for the sake of who's watching on the crowd. We are a separate entity with an MOU that ties us, that every activity that we do is tied in support of the college's strategic plan, with a direct line to Dr. Eskamia, who also serves on our Foundation Board. So those are the three elements. And the most important thing, besides everything that we do and we talk about, is the people. And that's where, today, I wanted to point out, since only Drew of this group is here today, this is the Delmar College Foundation Board of Trustees. They serve as volunteers. They have an impressive background. And the common core is that this is not a resume builder. This is not an obligation. This is something they do because they care. They care about our faculty, our staff, our students in Delmar College. Every one of these folks on the board not only gives their time on a regular basis, they also give their money. It's more than the words. It's also where they support and invest in different ways. The second thing is our Delmar College Foundation staff. And here's where I would ask my entire team who's here today to go ahead and stand up, so we can recognize you briefly. Thank you, guys. You can't leave yet, by the way. You can't leave yet. So they all, they asked, "When can we leave?" Or, "Do we have to come?" And I was like, "Absolutely." So oftentimes, you see me at the podium, but the truth is, this last group right here and this group right here are the core substance of what makes Delmar College Foundation successful and be able to serve our students, faculty, and staff. It's not one person. It's many people. And these two slides, this is why I put pictures with names and positions of, this is who serves the college and the foundation. And it really is my privilege to serve alongside them. And I think I've got one of the best foundation teams across the state of Texas. And I think it's not just a feeling, it's the data that you'll see here in a minute to show that. I'm a business-centered, data-centered person, right? I'm people first and data-centered. And so we're talking about that. But for every dollar the college invests, we have a clear ROI of what comes back to the college. For every literal dollar you put into staff at the foundation, we average more than $4 back cash in to the college. Okay? And for this year, it was double our average. So that's something that, for the data-centered folks, maybe like Regent Loeb, that's maybe appealing there. So moving forward, a quick snapshot of our most recently concluded fiscal year. We used to call it contributions and grants, right? We still do. But I look at this as private investment. This is people, companies, and foundations who do not have to give their money. There's not a tit-for-tat. It's simply they choose to of their own volition. And this year, we hit a record in the history of the college and the foundation. At 6.9 million within one fiscal year was given to the Delmar College Foundation. The second thing, when I look at, are we successful and what's our benchmark in terms of data, is not just how much money did we bring in, right? And this, by the way, was not in kind. This wasn't, "I'll give you a couch," and we count that in 6.9. This is not duplication. This isn't smoke and mirrors. That's an incredible record. That's due to this team, to this board, and to the community members as well. But this, did we support our students, right? And that's scholarships awarded. And I'd like to report that this past fiscal year, we also hit a record in the history of the college and the foundation at 2.95, we were so close to three, to 1,441 students. We've never come close to that before, and I think that's something to celebrate. Number one thing is our students. That's always students first, is the echoes of our private conversations with donors and board and staff alike. But I'd be remiss to not mention, because we just kind of moved past this and not let this board or even our fellow colleagues know what the foundation also does to facilitate excellence at Delmar College. Because we're a college of excellence. I can't repeat what Dr. Beverly likes to say, but we're an institution of excellence. And that third item right there is, I'm gonna start reporting, just the high level of what other fiscal support are we doing to support Delmar College? $1.63 million in cash came to Delmar College via the foundation to support faculty, staff, and students. That was not scholarship support, but it was something that people in our community said, "This can be leveled up." All right? And how do we help? And we work with faculty and staff, and we say, "Well, we need this, and we can make this better." All right? And that's that 1.63 million. Our net assets exceeded $41 million for the first year, and that's also something to celebrate. 10-year snapshot, I'm not gonna go one by one, but besides our one fiscal year, we're also looking at a sustained level of excellence for the foundation as a separate nonprofit. A donor told me, Matthew, "One record-setting year is great, but the first question is, is that a fluke? Or is that repeatable?" Right? And repeatable is what we aim for. And so this 10-year snapshot is something to be very proud of in terms of how much we've raised, how much has been given, how much we've awarded out to students, and the fiscal health of the foundation. So that's something definitely to celebrate. I said it last year, or say it this year again, for me and my position, there's no greater position of it succeeds or it fails, except for the person who sits in Dr. Eskamia's chair. And so that's y'all's employee, as a Foundation Board liaison, putting that executive director hat on, I succeed or I fail at the foundation because of the president and CEO. I'm just putting it very bluntly, right? And so does every community college foundation across this state. And so I just want to let you know, that has been really one of the key impetus, besides the board and the staff, between moving those assets from 18 to 41 million and the endowment from 11 to 28, and supporting the level of students the way we are. Some of my peers across the state of Texas are told by their president, CEO, their chancellor, "This is your priority. Go raise money so we can build X, Y, Z, or we can do X, Y, Z." And it's not always students. And I will tell you, from day one till right now, Dr. Eskamia's made it clear, students first. And that's what we've done. Student emergency aid is something that we wanted to point out to you. We have a lot of private support. This is not federal-state support, where many of our students have significant investment by this board in freedom to dream. Millions of dollars is invested into these students like it can be and should be. The foundation takes millions and invests them in scholarships, and these students are investing a crazy amount of work to earning their degree. And then life happens. Life happens to a person who just is working their butt off, right, and doing everything they can correct. And they're balancing three jobs, and they're full-time school, and they've got their kids, and then life strikes and the tires go flat. Something happens, and then are we there for them or not? And that "there for them" isn't a simple pat on the shoulder or a nice warm hug, which sometimes that is what is needed. It's money. And that's where the foundation comes in. And we've listened to faculty and staff, and we try to make it as quick as possible. We support these students in their moment of need. 158,000 has been awarded to 564 students in this last fiscal year. We're already on track to helping even more of those students. Something that our foundation team and board is proud of. So not going year by year, right, but this is something to be proud of. This is our net assets on a 10-year incline, or rather, 15-year from 2010 to 2025. We're gonna move through funds raised, ending in June, okay, so 2010 to 25. You've seen that we're averaging in, you know, about one and a half. We start to see some bumps, but at the end of the day, where our average is going up, or so is our records. Scholarships awarded, one of the things we're most proud of, but that doesn't happen unless we're bringing money in. So it's always the two-way thing, which is this year, we see a steady incline of how we're awarding and supporting students. And our goal is both to scale and sustain these things in a multitude of ways. Net assets for comparative data, I'm not gonna go one by one. I have some amazing peers across the state of Texas, and I collaborate with all of them regularly. We support each other. But it's something I'm very, very proud of, that when I look at our peer colleges as defined by the coordinating board, so my other peer vice presidents come out and talk about statistics on an ongoing basis. This is the same group of peers, from Laredo to Dallas and all in between, right? This is how we line up on the three sets of data: net assets, fundraising, and scholarships awarded, right? And I would pretty much say, we're doing pretty darn good with a steady way to go up more, right? So these are the net assets, right? The asterisk means that this is a direct peer. We're a large versus Dallas is a very large college. Now, you may look at some of these numbers and say, "How did Dallas get to 120?" Because maybe last year, you remember, we were closer to Dallas. Well, that's what I call lightning strikes, right? The good kind of lightning strikes, where Mackenzie Scott comes in and suddenly a $50 million gift materializes. That changed net assets numbers. That changed net assets numbers, okay? Funds raised comparative data is the investment by Dr. Eskamia, this Board of Regents and my peers across the college worth it, right? And this, this shows that yes, it's worth it. And so I'm going to keep moving. Scholarships awarded, how do we line up in terms of our support for students? This is where Delmar College Foundation ranks eighth out of fifty. Eighth out of, we have fifty community colleges across the state of Texas, we're number eight and look at where we line up. And once again, I'm not disparaging my colleagues across the state, they're doing amazing work in great different positions, we're right next in between Austin and Tarrant. We awarded how much more than Austin Community College, right? Or Collin College and we're right up there in the ranks of some of the largest community colleges in the entire country in terms of how we're supporting students with scholarships. All right, almost done. So fundraising focus for us, because I sometimes have questions indirect or direct of how do we do things? And there's two things that we tie in terms of being very authentic with each other, which is meaningful and significant philanthropy, right? At the end of the day, I'm a philanthropic advisor and we have a team of philanthropic advisors doing the best we can to support our students, faculty and staff. So we try to be very systematic, strategic and at the end of the day, sustainable with all of our efforts. That's why we don't do event-based fundraising, quite frankly, right? We try to work one-on-one with donors, building relationships that are long-term, but at the end of the day, result in more significant support and actually make a difference to more students in a greater way. And that's how we've seen these shifts in our, in our data. I'm going to keep moving. So do scholarships work, right? Same information as last year, the short answer is yes. The question some folks have, so I'll just address is freedom to dream and its relationship with foundation scholarships. Does it take the place? Is there still a need for scholarships? Well, absolutely. The premise of freedom to dream and working with Dr. Eskamia and our peers here is that there be an additional layer of support for our students who need it, who deserve it, who are working hard. So we have federal financial aid, which is the number one bulk of support, we have foundation scholarships, which is almost that three million, and we have freedom to dream as three layers of support to accelerate or propel the students towards success. All three are very important and I think for scholarships, the short answer is yes, they absolutely work in combination with freedom to dream or all by themselves. Who we award scholarships to is reflective of our community. We look at demographics, I'm not going to share those with you, but we regularly annually look at demographics in a variety of ways and just know that demographics of our college match our community and those are identically reflected at the foundation. Let's see. Many of you, I think most of you actually attended the recent scholarship dinner and that was one element of how the foundation facilitates meaningful and significant relationships. We do have an annual event where the sole purpose is to connect our scholarship donors with the students that they've invested in. That's our number one primary. And through that lovely engagement, the students are oftentimes leave inspired, not because of my story or anyone else's story or the food, but simply because of the donor that they got to meet at that table and the conversations they were able to hear. The donors leave the same, they leave feeling confident that their investment into the college and the foundation and into these students was a worthy one. And usually the follow-up I get, besides, you know, the chicken was cold or we want more chocolate or whatever, or talk less, talk more, show a video, the most meaningful conversations are, hey, here's a check or hey, let's talk about how can I help, instead of two, how can I help four, or I want to increase my scholarship. That's without being asked, they're in result of things like that. The foundation also facilitates customized campus visits and mail scholarship reports where we reveal a lot of transparency and information about individual scholarships. So the last thing is I tried to put together a slide with a hundred-and-eighty pictures and Jeff said, stop, you know, and he said, and the next time he says, please show me that slide first, but I stopped at eighteen and it's just a giant cluster of pictures. But to me, it's actually very important. All these scholarships represent people and you can see those people. Drew's father is on there, former mayor Luther Jones. I don't have to, I'm not going to point everybody out there. This, when I look at this group of people, is an absolutely amazing group of people, some who are here today, some who haven't been around for decades, right? Each of them has a passionate, amazing story that inspired their family, their friends, their community, still does today. And besides the money, this is why students on foundation scholarships excel more than any student who does not have one, because it's the story. And the story is something we weren't particularly skilled at sharing in years past, because it's a massive effort that my colleagues back here at the foundation really helped create. Makes the donors feel great, they're never going to be forgotten, their father, their mother, their grandmother, so, so on and so forth, will not be forgotten. But more than that, it's a direct benefit to our students. Students have come to me after that dinner and said, Matthew, you know, I don't have any money, not right now, but once I start making money as a radiology tech, they make good money, as a you name it, you name it, I want to come back and create a scholarship like those folks did. I want to tell the story of my grandmother who changed my life, I want to do such and such. So this is the intrinsic motivation that moves a student into succeeding. One of those stories happened today and I don't see Mr. Vasquez or is Alice or Roll here? No, okay, but I will mention one. At ten o'clock, right before this meeting, Dr. Eskamia and I had, and my colleague Denise and Marissa got to meet with three people in our community. And they didn't ask me or expect me to mention their names and I hand-wrote it on here, but I want to point this out because it's a very important piece of the story, right? Their faces are not up here because they did something amazing today. They gave a hundred thousand dollars to create a brand-new scholarship where it's as real as the ink on the paper, the Adame Gonzalez and Vasquez Education and Scholarship Fund. And that Adame is Dr. Nick Adame right here, along with Juan Vasquez and Alice Gonzalez, each of them with a personal amazing story, but I'd be here for another fifteen minutes, tied to Delmar, but most importantly, they gave to create a scholarship because they believe in our students and they want this endowed scholarship to go on forever, inspiring our students and supporting our students. And that's, as I conclude, a report of records, right? In every three of the which ways that we do it, money received, money given and students supported. I don't want to leave you thinking everything's great, because everything's not great, because we had two-thousand-three-hundred-and-some-odd-short students who we sent an email and said, hi Mark, this is Matthew, thank you for applying for a scholarship, you know, unfortunately, you were not awarded anyone this year. Two-thousand-three-hundred-and-some-odd, got the, I'm sorry, we don't have funds. So is there a reason when a donor asks, I say, absolutely. Is it too late? Absolutely not. Can we do it? Give me the check and we're awarded. Elsie Garcia Odom is amazing back there and she's incredibly responsive. So all that to say is, any way that the members in the community, at the dais or behind me here can ever want to help students from the foundation side, feel free to reach out. That concludes my report. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Matthew. Appreciate all the good work that you all are doing. Thank you, Dr. Adame. That's incredible, that's an incredible gift. And please pass our apologies on to your colleagues, Drew, and to your board members, Matthew. Sorry that it took a minute to get to the foundation report, but we had important, important work to do before we got to that. So any questions for Matthew? Keep up the good work. Thank you. All right, we're going to ask Mr. Olson and Mr. Houlihan to come forward and give us a marketing update.
Good afternoon, Regents Chair Scott, Dr. Eskamia. For any marketing strategy to succeed, you really need a great plan that's well-aligned with the prospective students that you're trying to reach. We've got a great plan that we put together, but more importantly than that, you really need dynamic marketing leaders who can execute on that plan, that can pivot when the landscape changes, that aren't afraid to introduce new technologies or new methods in the marketing. So I'm proud to turn it over to Jason Houlihan, who's going to share a little bit about what he and his team have been doing on the marketing front. Jason?
Thank you, Mr. Olson. So today's update is about how we're transforming the enrollment experience at Delmar College. Last month, you heard from Mrs. Krobosinski about the Brand Health Survey and what was overwhelmingly positive, you know? We did see some opportunity in there with two particular audiences, high school students and parents. We're not going to talk extensively about adult learners today, I realize that was also part of the presentation, but again, overwhelmingly positive. So we're going to focus on those two groups and what the opportunities are. After that, we're going to talk about Element 451. Last year, the college went through a RFP process to select a customer relationship management system. About a week before we did Freedom to Dream 1.0, we implemented it or started working with it and used it for Freedom to Dream 1.0. I think the best way to explain what a CRM is, for those who don't use that day-to-day, it's like GPS. It helps show you where you are, where you need to turn and how to get to your destination. All of our students want to get to graduation, but initially, they just need to get enrolled in college. One of the pain points that was brought up over and over again in the Brand Health Survey was they needed more clarity on what's next, what steps they need to take, how do they get to the point that they can take a class? And it's our belief that the rigor should be when they go over to Dr. Howcomb's team, not when they're going through the registration process. And then we're going to talk a little bit about the potential and plan for Freedom to Dream 2.0 as it relates to marketing and Element 451. And lastly, we're going to talk a little bit about how the college can increase market So repositioning for high school students, a lot of them in the Brand Health Survey said they want to go to college. Good, that's a great thing. However, community college or Delmar College wasn't their first choice. So we have a lot of work to do to get to a place where we are their first choice. Whether they're a dual enrollment student and they matriculate over to the college to finish fifteen hours in an AAS or whatever it is their goal happens to be, we want them to complete some kind of credential at our college. So what do we need to do? We need to have more of a modern digital experience so they understand what our college has to offer them. Jesse and I had the privilege of going to the superintendent of CCISD, Roland Hernandez's, I think it's some kind of group of students, and we were talking with them about, and actually, great news for Dr. Rivera, all of them were dual enrollment students, so that was great to hear. But a lot of them were sharing things like, well, I didn't really know Delmar had that or I didn't know about this outcome. Only one of those students was planning to actually come to Delmar College after they graduated high school to study radiology. But even that student said, I didn't know that twenty-two out of twenty-five of those students all had jobs. So it's our, I think our work to do a better job telling real student success stories and outcomes, how a Delmar College education can directly lead them to a career. We also want to do a better job of showing them clear academic and transfer pathways. There's work happening in the background that I know many of you are involved with that's going to also work towards that, but we need ways that they can get that information clearly and concisely. And so we have a new tool, we're going to show in a couple of minutes, of AI guidance of Val the Viking. It's powered by Element 451 and a knowledge base that could guide a student in transfer pathways or any question that they happen to have. Now my favorite part, parents. Parents were, it was again overwhelmingly positive, they know it's affordable, they recommend Delmar College. And there was two pieces that made me a little queasy, they're unsure about career outcomes and they question the transferability. So what do we do? What do we do to get through to parents? How do we get in front of them? My colleague and friend Ralph Gunnan back there, he created a dual workflow so that we can communicate directly with parents. So when we do Freedom to Dream, or if you guys vote for Freedom to Dream 2.0 this time, we will have a form and it will create two people records in simple way that means we can communicate with a parent and a student and we know they have a relationship. We know it's their mom, their dad, their uncle, whatever it is. Because we want to activate them as partners and us helping their student get to the, get through the enrollment process, but also get through college. We're also planning to use this same workflow for dual enrollment. So all of these things are how we're going to reposition ourselves to better communicate to parents beyond just what we do in paid marketing. So we have access to them to text and email. Element 451, we're about eleven months in, but what I wanted people to understand, all too often, it's thought of as just a texting or email platform, it's so much more than that. It's incredibly powerful, it's as powerful as the data that we put into it. It tracks the entire student journey if we wanted to. At this time, we've been partnering with IT and our plan is for this to be really the beginning of a student's journey. So all the way up to them moving over to a Lucian and then actually being a student, they're going to live in Element 451. We're currently working on an application that the college will actually own, which is great, because we'll have insight into the process that we don't have today. Not replacing, not replacing the current system, but it's our preferred method so that we can intervene where we need to, we know where a student may have dropped off in the application process. It even does things for us like check residency, it powers, again, those parent and student workflows. And we're currently working on a scope of work so we can connect it with the Lucian and have access to all kinds of data that'll help us inform how we communicate to those students in an individualized and personalized way. And the last thing, and I'm going to ask my friend Zach to help or someone help me pull up the video so I can show you guys the Val the Viking AI agent. Oh, we already got it? Yep, there we go. So if you guys are familiar with Students Helping Students, the Facebook group, it's infamous, I went on there and you're going to see in a minute, I just went ahead and pulled questions straight from there. So Val the Viking is just an AI agent that's powered by a knowledge base that we have complete control over. So students often ask like, what date in January do spring classes start? My classes say they start January 12th, but the calendar says classes begin January 20th for the fifteenth and eighteen-week classes, so they're confused. So the AI agent immediately tells them, yeah, nice catch, this is when it starts for each one of those different modalities of class. Why is that great? Because it helps reduce staff time, like answering those basic questions. And also frankly, I think a lot of people feel dumb to ask them. And so they can go straight to someone that's not a person, who's not going to judge them or shame them for the question, like where do I get my student ID? And then it's going to tell them, hey, this is how you can get your student ID without having to call the college, without having to wait for the answer. If you search Google today, this is how Google search really works now too. So it tells them, hey, these are the campuses, you could get your student ID. And then we're going to test it asking, well, if I go to the Heritage Campus, like how do I sign up? Like what can I do?
Does it know who the easy professors are?
I threw in some questions about Dr. Long and it was actually pretty good about where to get, where to get study help, but.
So when they log into the website and they just go up to the question part and he'll pop up, so.
Yes, ma'am. So we're planning to do this in about, I think, right when we get after from break. And what we used to have is on the corner of the website, there will be Val the Viking, they could click and then ask questions in any language. So like this example, I'm going to go back to PowerPoint after this, like I don't speak English, so how does it help me there? It even does that, immediately translating everything over to Spanish, Vietnamese, whatever their native language might be.
So are you going to be tracking the questions that Val does not have an answer to?
Yes.
To add to the program?
Yes, we will. And the plan is for us to update the knowledge base consistently, probably on a more weekly basis so that, yeah, there we go. So that we can kind of keep it curated and make sure that it has accurate information. I think right now, we're really trying to address the gaps in information, like right now doesn't have anything for Freedom to Dream 2.0, that's immediately going to need to be addressed if we're going to launch this for January of twenty-six, because people are going to ask that question. In basic broad strokes, we just wanted you guys to know that we had a plan and a strategy for paid marketing for Freedom to Dream 2.0. Every single year, we meet with our advertising agency, they just got renewed, it's Anderson Marketing Group, and they do all of our media buying. So in that session, we talked about the potential of Freedom to Dream 2.0 and we talked about allocating some of our ad spend for the budgetary year to this initiative. The four things you see on here are the primary ways that we plan, not exhaustive lists, but the primary ways that we plan to really push Freedom to Dream. So an example is Meta, Facebook, Instagram, if they get on Facebook or Instagram, they should be served ads about Freedom to Dream 2.0 that takes them to a landing page, which will be similar to what we used last time. They can fill out the form and then they'll get the information on what the next steps are so that they can take advantage or see if they qualify. All of these things are meant to get people to that landing page and fill out the form. Also, I'm really, really excited to announce this, as a final push for Freedom to Dream 2.0, if that's what we decide to do, but we are planning to do Noche de Sueños, a night of dreams in the quad or Creighton Plaza of the Heritage Campus. If you were at Viking Fest, you saw the stage. If you read Viking Fest, you saw the stage very similar, but planning to kind of set that up all facing in the front of Heldenfeld's Out so that people can watch a concert, but also get enrolled in classes. Our objective is to get them there so they can finish any of their enrollment stuff, but then kind of have a final opportunity to communicate to the community how important and how they can take advantage of Freedom to Dream 2.0 if it passes. And the last thing I kind of wanted to hit on, I said that parent, you know, dual form. I'm really excited about that. It's probably us nerding out on forms, and I, my apologies. But we're really excited about it. Last time, lessons learned from Freedom to Dream 1.0 was a lot of parents filled out the form. We didn't even think about that. And instead of taking that possibility out, we said, why don't we leverage that? You know, we looked at the Brand Health Survey. We want to activate parents as active partners in the process of rolling their child in college. So what we built is one form and two linked records. And it distinguishes between a parent and a student's actions so that we can give them and communicate with them all through the process. And the main thing for you guys to know is it keeps that relationship intact, which is so critical for us, because no one's going to remember, like, you know, so-and-so who's parent. We can get into the system, and we can create segments and communicate with those people individually and make sure they get all their stuff done for Freedom to Dream 2.0. All the things I talked to you guys about today in the marketing update are really built so that the college can increase market share. We want to have our own application so that we can further have insight into the process and help people get to the finish line of enrolling for classes. We want to provide real-time and personalized enrollment steps to every student, and we really want to reduce the friction across the entire enrollment funnel. And again, if you don't know what an enrollment funnel is, it's just the steps a student has to take to become enrolled in a class. Just all the things from the point that they know about the college, the point they're actually sitting down in a class. And we want to ensure that they have fast, accurate, and consistent experience for all parents and students as well as our adult learners. So thank you, guys, very much. Do you have any questions?
I have a comment. I appreciate adding that parent piece because even as a parent and a board member, it's like, mm, okay, here's the time. It's been three weeks. I haven't heard anything. Have you heard anything? Check your email. Check your email. I'm poor Gracie. Thank you so much. You know, I just, you know, I bombarded her and constantly just trying to figure out where we're, where we stand and what was the process and making sure we hit our due dates. And I was always sure what those due dates were. So I'm glad that you added that parent piece, so.
Thank you very much.
Regent Garza?
Thanks for your presentation. And I don't mean to be, I'm not trying to be negative. I'm actually trying to add to the picture, right? Okay, talked about parents, right? We identify also that we've got students that are no longer under their parents' control. So we've got a population of our students that are already working, students working their parents themselves. And so they're trying to find their own way to improve their earning power. My thoughts are versus market share, growing the market, right? So we've got an element, we've got students that, young students that are in high school or even junior high, middle school, right? That their parents are not well enough in tune with what opportunities Delmar offers, what job opportunities there are in our, in our community, in our region, our area that kids have to shoot for. I mean, we, and I'd like for you guys to also consider being able to reach those, the potential clients that we're going to have that might sit on the couch between 18 and 32 years old because they don't have any direction. The parents right now are thinking about just how they're going to pay their rent, not how they're going to be able to pay even something that's affordable. So those students, we need to figure out how we can reach those students so that they're remaining engaged in their educational journey and so that they know that we've got something for them. So in your piece, at some point, figure out how, what we might be able to do to be able to help those young students that we might be able to get encouraged and enthused in being able to look for what programs might help them. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And yeah, I think that was a big part of Mrs. Kropitzensky's presentation last time. And I did abstain from including some of those things, but they absolutely are part of our plan. We're not planning to remove any of the paid marketing that we do directly to adult learners. But I would say that a lot of these things directly apply to them as well. They, a lot of them said on the survey, again, they don't really know what the next step is in their enrollment journey, and that's frustrating. When you come here for help, and I'm not like pointing at anybody in particular, but when you come here for help, you want help. You want to know how to get to where you want to be. So we do have to do better at that.
Well, I know that everything that you're talking about relating to the enrollment process, right, is spot on. I mean, really, we really need to make it easier for folks. But in terms of figuring out how Delmar can be the first choice, like I said, for those students that don't have any encouragement or any, any kind of direction from parents who don't, don't think about higher education as essential, or figure out how to reach them. Those are the ones that I'm talking about. Okay, thank you.
Regent Loeb?
I wanted to suggest that you add the capability, if you don't already, where you can have multiples because I know from preschool board, there's enough divorced couples where it's, you know, oh, no, you have to give it to both of us. Or then there's two parents, and then grandma's like, well, why aren't I getting the same stuff, too? So, you know, just the capability to be able to add more. You never know what kind of situation there is. Are, we're still doing the in-person marketing events at every high school?
Yes, sir. We're currently working. We're currently working on a plan to visit all the high schools that are in district, again, alongside Dr. Rivera and Carrato. So yes, sir, we'll still do all the in-person marketing.
And, and when they, if they are dual credit student, are they going to be automatically in the system when they sign up for dual credit?
They won't automatically be in Element 451, but we are pulling that list so that we can start communicating with them upon its passing.
I mean, I think we should start kind of looking at that is how can we, how early can we get them in this system and then using that system to communicate with them? Because, you know, that lets you stretch it out where it's not just, you know, kind of rush year, their senior year high school, where, you know, we're building a relationship with them and their family earlier and earlier. And I think that, I think that'll help. And that gives us an opportunity to, you know, educate the parents and students on, you know, programs and what we have available is if they're in the system and they're getting, you know, hey, come to this, come to that, you know? Here's an article about jobs that Delmar graduates get, you know, things like that. So I think any opportunity we have to get people into that system prior to them signing up gives them more of an opportunity to learn about the college and be less bewildered when it comes time to sign up. So, thank you, but this is great. I saw your, I saw your podcast, and you did wonderfully.
Thank you very much.
So I do want to say.
Regent Kelly first.
Sorry.
Okay, I've got some questions. So are the parents going to be getting the same information as the student? And when you talk about progress, are we talking about the admissions process or how they're progressing in their classes and things like that?
At this time, we're not, we're not planning to use it for, like, their progress in classes. We're just planning to use it for admissions progress. So an example would be like if they didn't get their bacterial meningitis vaccination shot record into us, then we might say, hey, we want you to get that done. Or we have an event on Saturday, and we're going to have someone available to get that shot done for free. Please come and get it done, that kind of stuff.
Okay, my recollection was as I was paying for my children's education, I had to get their permission to look and see how they were doing in school.
That's correct. So that's kind of where the delineation, yeah, we have to be, yeah. Is once they're enrolled, then I think there's got to be a different, we got to get their permission to communicate with the parent.
Okay. Dr. Turner?
So I just know that Delmar has been really doing a great job getting into the schools. And I can tell you when it's springtime and you have to enroll in classes as freshmen and sophomores and so forth, they push dual credit. Everyone, you cannot tell me there's not one freshman that does not heard of Delmar or dual credit classes because they will start taking the TSI test as freshmen, and they take it again as sophomores, and they know exactly what's going on. And every counselor will push it and talk about Delmar classes. And every campus in our area talks about it, absolutely.
Thank you. I do have one question, kind of related to what Regent Garza was saying about adult students and potentially former students who have not yet completed. So do you have an opportunity to pull those records into Element 451? And, because I know we're talking a lot about Freedom to Dream right now, but we've got these other, these other student populations as well that may be just a lower priority right now, but in the long run, we'll get to them?
Yes, we have, we have done that. And I maybe kind of mischaracterized it to Regent Loeb. We have put all those records into Element 451. So everyone that's currently enrolled in fall of 2025 is in Element 451 for us to email and text. What's missing is really that data piece. And that's kind of what we're working on a scope of work with Ally and the whole IT team on.
Okay, good. Any other questions for Jason? Thank you very much. Very comprehensive, great work. All right, so just to make sure that Lenora doesn't leave her last meeting without having to do any heavy lifting, we do have a report on our tax increment finance zones.
Thank you, Regent Scott. I'm not sure I have my brain back yet. I was worried about making this presentation after that, with that amazing event there. So thank you all. Aggie Rivera and I are going to give, provide an update on our TIRS, our Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone progress and where we are today. And so here we go. First of all, I'd like to go over the policy as we have it. And Regent Scott spearheaded this back in 2019 to revitalize our policy. And so we follow it very closely, and it is quite comprehensive and in-depth. What we're here today is to share with you the highlights of this policy. It's probably two or three pages long, just to give you an idea. What we do, though, is we come out of Chapter 311 of the tax code, Higher Education Code, and apply that to entities such as the city and the county when they come to us and ask for participation. These projects have to be very well-defined, and we move forward with that. This submission of a request is a formal request from the taxing district, and it comes through the president's office. Once this is received, we look at the information that we've gotten to make sure it complies with policy. And quite often, bits and pieces are missing. They're coming normally from the city or Corpus Christi or the county. However, a developer can ask for one directly. We've not really processed those. We try to work with the city and the county first. However, to give you an idea of the type of information or the basic information that we have to receive, we have to have a complete description with a map and the zoning and everything that complies with the particles, parcels of lands that is being proposed. We look at acreage and very specific type information to make sure it's all there.
Before we move on from that, I had one question related to the second bullet point. Does our policy, when you say formally adopted, is that first or second reading, or is that final adoption? Because I'm wondering if there might be some conversation between first reading and the second and final reading.
Policy actually says approved or adopted. What we, sometimes we bring it to you before the second reading, but we do not enter into any interlocal agreements until there is a second reading.
I think we ought to encourage the submission of the request to us after the first reading. And that way, if there is any conversation to be had, then there is an opportunity for us to do that prior to the second reading by the city or the county. Thank you. If we, if we need to change policy to do that, I think we ought to consider that.
Yeah. And I agree. And after working with their staff, the city staff, I think the earlier we can get information, the better. You're seeing when we get to TIRS 7, we're going to talk more about TIRS 7. We actually received some very good information back in the summer on it. However, we don't have the final today. Thank you. On the purpose of the zone, this is where we get into the information that's generally a little bit different from what Delmar is requesting than perhaps what the city has presented. Because we are looking to make sure that the economic impact and that the purpose of the zone basically aligns with our mission, too. And that the sponsoring city or county has bring that out within the document that they're receiving. We look to see if there is an actual educational benefit and actually address the mission of the college. Of course, economic development was in our broadest mission for the college, and so we do come under that umbrella. However, when we look to see, we want to make sure that there is that positive impact to education overall. This economic impact also addresses more into the revitalization of generally a distressed area. And I know in the past, that's where in the past where you've spent quite a bit of time on discussion as a board as to whether or not the zone really addressed that distressed area or not. We also look to make sure that the employment and the jobs are accounted for that are predicted or proposed and that they propose that will come out of this area that's being revitalized. That, if you notice in here, it says, "Provide employment for the chronically unemployed and/or create jobs that align with the college's programs and curriculum." We do that. Quite often, the proposals don't identify that, but we work with the city or the developer to back those in and to bring that forward to you. That is an audit area that we try to track and that is looked at. So this is a, I think this economic impact analysis piece is probably one of the most critical that we do look at. This future tax impact is really where you're looking at the present value analysis and what they're looking at, the value going forward of the property that's involved and the tax revenue that will be generated. A TIRS is a reimbursement plan. And I think that's always critical in this element when you're looking at future tax impact impact in that you're only paying out a tax increment on what is actually generated and what is, can be reimbursed back to either a developer normally for the infrastructures that are created. So these are the highlights of the policies areas that we wanted to address. Any questions at this point about this? There is more policy, but I felt like these are the key areas that we look at. This is a very broad overview of all of the TERS that we've either had in the past or presently working on. And I wanted to show you how we've progressed really from one to the next over a period of years. I wasn't here in the, or I was here in the 1983 one in the Bayfront, but I did not work on it. It is complete. It, and it ended in 2004. This was for the Bayfront infrastructure down in, in that right front area. Many of you are familiar with that one. And my rec, the records are a little bit less on that, on that one. On TERS two, which is the Padre Island or Packard Channel, we did revisit that one in 2024 and the board at that time declined to, to extend it. I think if you reflect on the policy that we just went over, there were some questions as to how it met those policies. Very good, very good project. It didn't have anything to do with that. It was the, the meeting, our policy statement. Susan Hutchinson was our first delegate and, I'm sorry, Laurie Turner was. And then, and then Libby, you followed up with that one. Would you like to make a comment, Regent Everett?
I would, and I think Dr. Turner would probably agree with me. I mean, I think the board made the right call in not extending that. I mean, that's not a comment on the value of the project. It just didn't meet our criteria.
Okay, thank you. And then of course, TERS number three is the downtown area. And that was supporting the revitalization of the downtown area and it, and that C District, that very important C District, and especially with the bridge being completed, we're going to see even probably more revitalization in that area. And as you see, that will extend to 2028 and is in, and is ongoing. It was originally our delegate was Susan Hutchinson. And of course now, Mr. Garza, it's up to you. Would you like to make some comments?
In theory, I'm real supportive, supportive of the TERS, particularly in areas that, that you're trying to get reinvestment in because again, they've, they, the area has changed. Dynamics have changed. People have moved out. You're trying to get activity back in. I'm just a little concerned in some of the direction that some of the TERSes have gone in, particularly with the experience that I've had with downtown. Sometimes I've tossed around myself. I live downtown and I like some of the, good things have happened downtown, but I also am a little concerned that maybe as a whole, I think we, we've missed the mark on a couple of things and I'm, I'm getting more and more, I'm more, I've gotten more and more in the feeling of actually considering resigning and having somebody else possibly serve because I don't feel that we're doing all the right things. And so from a standpoint, if I could see us working in the spirit of the same, the initial intent, then I, you know, I think that certainly we should continue to participate. It's going to be of course, a call of, of the board. But I, I think that the only way older areas are going to benefit long-term is if you really adhere, adhere to creating a policy where so many of the dollars go into living initiatives, downtown, in this particular case downtown, living initiatives. Because I think that's going to be what's going to benefit long-term to downtown and sustain downtown area or any other area that we choose to, to, to be able to participate in. The area, the, the living portion or the piece, right, is something that I can see that long-term Delmar being able to benefit from. Because if you do have some, whether they be private dollars going into living in, in downtown or some private, public type like tax credit projects or mixed income type projects, you would see some young folks possibly living in a downtown area that then could, could, would be able to, to feed into Delmar. So again, that's going to be an item for a long discussion. I'm just kind of giving you my own personal feelings right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Just to comment on the, that district, with the removal of the Old Harbor Bridge, I think the focus is going to be a lot on the C District and how they utilize the existing right of way for the, of the Old Harbor Bridge and, and how that area develops. There's, there's a lot of opportunities there, but it's going to need a lot of guidance. That's just my opinion.
Thank you very much. All right, the next would be TERS four, which is the North Beach area. And Carol Scott, Regent Scott, you were the first delegate on that and that was up through 2023 presently. Regent Loeb, you serve on that board and have been reappointed through 2025. Just as a reminder, this is that North Beach revitalization with infrastructure upgrades, particularly in the drainage areas, public spaces and private development. Right now through 2028, we're at 100% participation and after 2029, it goes to 75% according to the interlocal agreement. And Regent Scott, would you like to make a comment?
Don't have a, I'll let David make a comment in a second, but is ours only a 10-year agreement on TERS number four or did we sign up for the full 20?
We only signed up for 10.
For 10. Yeah, so make a note on that if, when we use this chart again, that the, the TERS is in place for 20 years, but our participation.
I'm going to check that for you. I believe, I looked at it before I came and the interlocal appeared to be for 20.
Yeah. But, and as I recall, so I'm, I'm glad we're doing this because we've only historically only signed up for 10 at a time ever. So there are 20-year outlooks and there are 20-year expectations. The other entities do sign up for 10 or 20, but we've only done 10 to my recognition.
That's the, the policy is for 10.
Yeah.
But this one is ongoing and with Regent Scott and Regent Loeb following on the board.
Do you have any comments, David?
I can wait until the end.
And then TERS five was the Boko, which is the Alpha of SPID and Crosstown area. And it was basically canceled by the city and to my knowledge, never really got off the ground. So we've moved on with that one. And then of course, TERS six is Burizi Village. And Mr. Rivera was going to address that one.
So we've been in touch with the city about that. And in fact, as you're sitting here, they're apparently getting a report. The city told me, I talked to them a couple of weeks ago, they're getting a report from the developers. They're sort of at a standstill. Things have not really moved forward. And from the PowerPoint that they, that they were going to show the city this afternoon, which was shared with us, their issues with finding lenders who will provide money, costs are high, particularly with regards to coastal insurance. And they're finding it difficult to get, you know, capital infusion from sources. So for now, it is, there's not a lot going on, but stay tuned.
So it's been approved, but the developer agreement is still pending, I guess for, okay, in, in legal terms.
And of course, now we can move on to TERS number seven, which is the London area. And I've provided a few more slides for that one. This is still pending the final information from, and the interlocal agreement from the city. It's our understanding that the city and the county have both approved it. We have not received a final package. We've not received a formal request. This was an area that is not necessarily annexed in the city already. It would be to create what they call subzones and to bring areas in as development occurred. Then the developers would agree to be annexed by the city. And this would allow for future development of the infrastructure. And so this is still pending submission. However, there has been a lot of discussion in the community. And I know Regent Scott and I were on the phone with them as early as last spring. And I've been to the city once or twice now and met with city staff and seen what they've worked on. However, we do not have complete information yet. But just to give you an overview, the London area of course, is a growth projection or a growth corridor for our region. To be eligible for developers, they have to agree what's being proposed to build above the minimum standards of the Uniform Development Code. And this would be more infrastructure, more green spaces, neighborhood type amenities that would actually enhance the area. And so they're looking at how this whole area could be enhanced. That would be part of the proposal. This is a map to give everybody an idea as to what we're looking at. It's basically farmland, a lot of it, which is past the London area. And I'm going to move on to the next map. I think it's a little clearer. And I was going to give you some statistics on this or a little bit more information on what we've got here. This is a total of 4,608 acres. And they're looking at a 2025 base year. Now I'm not, I don't know that we would have to have the same base year. The Delmar can have a different base year than the city and the county. And so that would still be up for discussion. However, the city's documents so far show a 2025 base year. And there, and, and this is looking at, the city is looking at a 25-year TERS. They're looking at a 50% participation is what we've been told in the previous presentations that I have. And with a taxable value or projected taxable value, when this is built out and the proposal will be built out over a 10-year period, would be $2 to $3 billion with approximately $140 million in tax increment revenue that could become available. When you look at the, looking from the bottom up, it's kind of funny how they went A, B, C. But A is the Marabella development that is being proposed and that's 1,154 acres. I mean, sorry, 1,154 houses and 395 acres. And there would be a, and it would be 13 miles of trail somehow working around in there and that's what it's reporting with a 10-year build-out. Then when you move up to B, B is the proper and that is by a roads construction and a, and group. And that's 441 acres. And then of course, C is more of a commercial area and that's what they call the Chapman Commercial Area and that's approximately 30 acres. And those are the three developments that are under discussion and proposal right now that we know of. None of this, to my knowledge, are, is really in the, in the city limits. These developers would be working to come in to be annexed before this would even.
Well, I believe Marabella has been annexed.
Marabella's been annexed already up in, okay, I hadn't heard that, but thank you.
Either they've annexed or they've applied for annexation.
They've applied for it. And we're like, we should be getting more complete information. It was actually, we expected it last week, but we don't have a final proposal. So questions on this? This is what, but we will be bringing, when we get the specific information, we would work it up. And as you see, as it complies with policy, our conversations so far, there's still missing information that would comply, that would meet our policy statement. So we would still need to do some work with whatever they give us. But so the next steps, we'd receive a proposal from the city on TERS seven. We'd follow up with any questions that are left over and then after our review, bring it back to you for your consideration. Any questions?
Did you give this draft policy of the county to every Regent or just to me?
I've not seen it.
Gotcha.
This is received, yeah, it's, it's here.
So I wanted us to, to look at this because the county is, is considering a policy, kind of their own policy change. So we're not going to act on this today since this is a staff report, but I wanted us to see how the county is looking at some different parameters for their participation, just to inform our conversation and if we think we want to do additional revisions to our policy. I, I don't know that we've ever looked at the city's policy because they have, the city and the county have different planning and counties don't have zoning, but planning and zoning requirements than we do. But I wanted us to see what the county is proposing. So if we want to have a conversation about this, maybe a couple of us can suggest something or have a conversation about it and give staff some direction at the February meeting potentially.
Regent, if you could pay attention to the governance and participation and the way their staff do that, that would be helpful.
Yeah. Just, I got this when I walked in today and just in my quick review, there's a number of things in here that are contrary to state law.
I haven't reviewed it yet. I just sent it to you.
Yeah, I did, but, but I wanted us to see it and to realize that, that again, we, we have it, we have a different frame in which we enter the TERS conversation as an educational institution, but we are a ad valorem tax-supported entity. And so I just wanted us to be informed of what, how the conversation is changing between the city and the county on TERS policy.
Yeah, I, I would say, you know, I, I completely agree with your idea to amend the policy to add us kind of engaging after first reading this happened because I, I would say, well, I'll just say this, my capstone in my undergraduate work, coursework was the uses and abuses of TERS and business improvement districts nationally. And so we're running off the wrong side of the road around here locally. I mean, I, I would say, looking at the list of all the TERSes, the very successful ones were done on an area-wide basis at the behest of a community or neighborhood group that kind of set some goal, you know, after a public planning process. And we have veered into providing them as development incentives. And I, I would say we as a board, I mean, I'm fine with us saying, look, we're not doing these single, single developer things. And it's not, you know, I mean, maybe we give them incentives if there's some incentive policy that they qualify for, but you know, there's so many things that can happen in an individual development that I feel like as an educational institution with a staff with limited time, it's not worth it for us to participate, you know, to have somebody of Augie or Lenora's capability pulled off of normal duty and going and working on something that because the interest rate changes 2%, it's never going to happen, you know? And it's, it's not the developer's fault, but it's just, you know, the apartment market crashed, you know? Interest rates went up 3%. Burizi Village for the time being is not a viable project. But we spent dozens of staff hours of very highly paid, highly capable people working on it. I think we just, we need to be out of that business. Uptown, I think needs a TERS for incentives for whoever goes in because there's multiple buildings that need to get redeveloped. Ares Port Morgan, you know, especially this side of Staples, could definitely use a TERS to improve those neighborhoods for the neighborhoods around them. So I mean, I think if, if, I, I think if we're going to open up the policy, I think we should look at that and, and kind of have more, somewhat of a process policy where it's, you know, we would participate in public planning efforts for developing TERSes in these areas, you know, doing it where there's actual blight. I mean, I, I was going to ask Augie, you know, put him on the spot and say, Augie, do you do legal review of these? Because all of a sudden, the city is saying that blight is not a, blight is not required under state law. It absolutely is required under state law. Austin just got popped, they lost in district court on a inner-city one not being in a blighted area. Because it was, yes, it was inner-city, yes, it was redevelopment. The jury in the case did not find that was, it was blighted and that is a requirement of the state law. And so I think, yeah, I think we need to tighten up our policy to make sure that we're not spending a lot of time getting into something that's not going to happen or isn't really, doesn't really fit what our mold is. On, on the downtown one, it's coming up. You know, they've come and asked us to, you know, I think we need to have a discussion about if we don't redo a TERS, which isn't our policy, how can we continue to participate downtown as a college? Because we will, if, if the TERS expires, we will have that revenue and we can choose to invest some of that money back into downtown on an ongoing basis. So I'd like our staff to think of ways that we could engage or things that we could pay for. Because I, I think that's valid, but I don't think that we should jump our policy and just, you know, the, the point is you do a TERS, you reinvest the tax money back into that area after a certain period of time, that's worked and it's time to share that benefit with the rest of the community in taxes. And so, you know, if it's an uptown one that's partially in downtown, okay, fine. Because we did the Bayfront one and then we did the downtown one. But I don't, I don't think we can continually kind of keep them going because then it's just private government for rich people and that is absolutely not what the statute or the movement to create these things intended. You know, it's supposed to be, you, you actually fix up a neighborhood that is not productive and make it productive and then it goes on regular service just like everybody else. So those are my thoughts. And yeah, I mean, I, I think the county's trying to grapple with some stuff here, but I don't know if, I don't know if I agree with their approach. One thing I think we need to talk about is how much of a TERS gets used for administrative staff, staffing and by whom? You know, I, I think, I think it's reasonable to set a percentage in our policy that says, you know, we will, we will do, whoever is managing this, we will do this much money a year. And if you want that number to change, you need to come back to us as a full board. That is not something that the TERS board gets to decide. So I mean, I think, thinking about things that are hard, you know, what do we, what are we okay with the TERS board deciding and what are the things that we as a full body, because this is taxpayer money that got paid to us and distributed to them, what are the things that if it changes, we need to be voting on? And I think, you know, if the project list changes significantly, that needs to happen.
Right.
And I think we need to flesh out what a project list is.
Well, and considering, my issue is considering that we don't have any other, we don't have fees. We can't, we can't impose user fees for things. We have, and the state is telling us, you can't raise tuition and student charges right now. So, when we're talking about ad valorem numbers, that's a big deal to me, is we don't have other ways to come about that. So, I think what I'd like to do, I want to hear from Regent Cruel, and then I'm going to ask those of you who have some thoughts on the policy piece. You don't have to write the policy, but if you have some suggestions, would you email them to Mark and Augie? And let's make, see if we can gather, because some of you are more interested in this than others, and some may have thought more about this than others. But as opposed to waiting till February or March to discuss it again, if you have some ideas on redoing the policy just based on what you've read here in the presentation, please email those to Mark and Augie. Regent Cruel?
Well, I agree with Regent Loeb's observations. And the other thing that bothers me about TURS is particularly like, for example, the one on the island. It started out with a project plan and a project scope to, that was centered around improvements around Packer Channel. And it is now morphed into subsidizing a developer or developers that are within the TURS. And that's not the function of a TURS. Now, you made the observation that the area needed to be blighted. In my reading of the state law, there's a couple of, there's some exemption-type language in there to that, which is questionable, but depending on, I guess it's, depends on which, how the jury interprets it. But yeah, I, and as far as TURS number seven goes, what I've seen so far is, that's just a blatant support of developers with tax dollars.
Anything else for this discussion today?
I just wanted to give, Regent Scott, I'm going to give you a shout out, and I know Ms. Keys will join me. You know, it wasn't that long ago where we didn't have any policy. I mean, these were just rolling in, and we sort of dealt with them on an ad hoc basis. And it was at your insistence and your initiative that we came up with policies. And so, now at least we have something to amend and get better. And so, yes, please, send in whatever thoughts you have. Give me a call. Dr. Scott, come in, I'll sit down and visit with you, and we'll be ready to present you with some-
Would the suggestion for an ad hoc committee or subcommittee, I can bring that together and coordinate that or the task group?
Sure. Why don't we ask Regent Garza and Regent Loeb, as our two sitting TURS members, to serve on it as well? And Regent Cruel, would you like to? So, those three members to do a little ad hoc luncheon and discussion?
Yeah, we can do that. I've got all kinds of other ideas because I've been working with members of the various entities out there, listening to them all and trying to say very little so that we can get to this point. Well, I've been doing a lot of listening, is another way to put it, Dr., Regent Loeb, so.
And let's, Regent Kelly, if you want to sit on it too, because you're our other city guy, you want to do it as well?
Yeah.
All right, there we go. There's four. That's the most we can have.
That's it. No must.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Keys, let's talk about tax abatement update.
Yes.
And we have a guest here today.
Thank you. It's my privilege to invite Randy Almaguer, Randy, to come forward. Randy's with the Corpus Christi Regional Economic Development Board Corporation. And as a compliance officer, his duty is to look at tax abatement. And pretty much, you're going to see, this is very similar to last year's report. And, but Randy has graciously sat through today and is here to bring us up to date. Thank you, Randy.
Thanks, Randy. Good to see you.
Thank you, Lenore. That's the second person to say, sitting here that long, but Matt texted me, I said, "It's not that bad here. Have you been at council?" And you've got to wait to present. That gets, that gets a little long.
You said that, not us.
We regularly applaud people, I mean, you know.
Yeah, so I was like, "This is nothing."
Randy, you're on the air.
Okay. I know, I know. I'm not saying it's a bad thing, you just don't know when your item's coming.
Nobody watches our memes, anyway.
Cameras on.
He's going to tell on them.
So, Randy Almaguer, I'm with the Corpus Christi Regional Economic Development Corporation. I am the compliance officer. I've been the compliance officer since June of 2023. And that's when Mike handed that off to me. He used to come present to y'all. This is something we do on an annual basis. So, it's a short presentation, I want to get through it. You know, I know you have more items coming up, but it's, you know, talk about compliance, what I do specifically, who we do it for, how do we measure compliance? You know, a couple of tax abatements that y'all have here that are set to expire. I believe there's an amendment for one to extend a little longer, and I'll get into that. So, again, who do we do compliance for? We have, you know, City of Corpus, San Pat, Nuasis, the Drainage District, of course, Delmar College, Type A and Type B. Type A will soon roll off, I think, the first quarter of next year. Everything will be Type B. I'm sure the regions know of the eight small business projects with Type B that we got passed earlier during budget in June-July timeframe. So, and then, of course, with the Delmar College Foundation that got taken back in 2023, I believe, that got passed with Type B and City Council. So, this is who we do compliance for, for all these entities. And then, again, how do we do compliance? How do we measure that? When we're doing compliance, you know, there's agreements in place, again, tax abatements, Type B developer agreements, things like that. So, we use IRS forms 941 and 940. These are, these annual reports submitted to the IRS and quarterly reports. We do, we take those, from those entities when they're requesting their tax abatements, auditing financials. Sometimes you have in the agreements 200 jobs, right? So many have to be in City of Corpus, so many have to be in Nuasis County, things like that. Well, that's where you have your Texas Work First Commission reports as well to verify that they actually live in those counties or cities, things like that. And again, all the other companies' assertions, so that's things we do. And once we get all that compiled, of course, we measure it with what they sent, what we verified. I put a packet together and I email it off to Dr. Eskamia for him to have. So, these are the two I was talking about. You have M&amp;G, who is now CC Polymers, and Epic, who is now Philip 66. As you can see, their investment in jobs, one was in 2014, and one got approved in 2019. One was a 10-year, one was a 7-year. And you can see both ending in 2024. I know, I think, last December, we were here, CC Polymers came up, and the regions were going to approve an amendment with, if Nuasis County approved the amendment. That did happen, and it looks like that's going to go out to 2027. You'll see next, next December, I'll have this updated. I didn't, I didn't have all that information fast enough. I apologize for that, not to show the accurate information up there. But as you can see, the investment levels there and what the actual investment is, 950 million versus the 869 of actual. Again, you see the production started. So, this is when we get, this is, again, over the 10-year period. As you can see with both, it was minimal. If you didn't incentivize this, you know, it gets very competitive. Now, being with the EDC, you see how competition is with surrounding cities, counties, you know, around the state, other states, when you're trying to bring in investment here, large investment like this. You know, and by offering that, you're able to incentivize this, you know, as you can see, instead of 7, 800 a year of taxes, you're getting, you know, a little over a million dollars a year for the 10 years. That's with the investment that came in. And then, you don't even, you know, you can talk about, you know, the spin-off of that, of the residents that are working there, you know, that are buying houses here. And I know, you know, we mention this every year, and the kids going to school here and things of that nature, but, you know, buying a car, sales tax. So, you're talking about other thing that's, you know, develop, you know, economic development in the area, kind of thing. I believe that's it. I'm sorry about this slide here. I didn't update it. It's not 2024, it is 2025. I stand by for any questions.
Any questions for Randy? We thank you for this. It just helps us keep, keep track on an annual basis of what's out there, and you'll let us know if anything else comes up.
Yes, ma'am, I appreciate it. Thank you all. And if I don't see y'all again, happy holidays and have a happy new year as well.
Same to you, thank you. All right, next, we're going to hear a staff report on our student charges. And Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay. So, the college's student charges presentation will focus on three areas that will help guide our tuition and fee strategy for the proposed 2025-2026 budget year. First, we will review external and internal factors impacting a balanced budget. Second, we will examine student affordability indicators to ensure that any possible adjustments or potential adjustments will continue to support student access. And finally, we will look at historical analysis of student charges. This review will help us understand past trends and provide valuable insights for determining the adequacy of existing charges moving forward. Okay, as we prepare for the 2025-2026 budget, the college faces a complex mix of external and internal challenges that will shape our ability to deliver a balanced budget. These challenges directly affect our three major funding streams, including student charges. Externally, current discussions are underway regarding potential legislative property tax changes that could cap, reduce, or even eliminate property taxes, creating a heightened level of uncertainty relating to local funding for Delmar College. Second, the governor has provided guidance for a freeze on student charges for the 2025-2026 academic year. While this measure protects students from inflationary-driven cost increases and keeps education affordable, it also limits the college's ability to offset rising expenses, increasing reliance on local property taxes and state funding. Compounding these pressures are changes to the state HPH performance funding model. It is a dynamic funding in nature, introduces a degree of unpredictability in state allocations. For example, the college recently learned that certain associate's degrees will no longer qualify for state funding, resulting in an estimated state funding reduction of nearly $600,000. Adding to this financial string are current upward inflationary trends coupled with uncertainty about the potential impact of the terrorists that could further escalate the costs for both students and the college. Internally, these constraints affect our ability to fund strategic priorities. This includes wraparound services to support student success, strengthening the dual-credit initiatives, addressing deferred maintenance needs, and planning for additional capacity to meet enrollment growth. In short, these external and internal factors create a challenging environment for maintaining financial stability while advancing our mission that may require adjustments to current student charges. Delmar recognizes that affordability is essential to ensuring student access to higher education. For this reason, the college has consistently positioned itself as one of the most cost-effective options. To measure affordability across 50 public community colleges in Texas, we evaluate student charges, financial assistance, and student loan data. Since the fall of 2020, Delmar College has maintained charges below the statewide average. Notably, Delmar College has the lowest cost of attendance for the fall of 2023, as reported by the coordinating board, of $1,750 for 15 semester credit hours. Furthermore, adjustments to the Delmar College tuition charges have remained significantly below the Texas rate of inflation, reinforcing our commitment to affordability due in part to our strategy of low and modest student charges. Student financial assistance is the next key indicator of student affordability. For the 2022-2023 academic year, Delmar College students received the highest level of financial aid among public community colleges in Texas. According to the latest IPEDS report from the National Center of Education Statistics, our first-time freshmen were awarded an average of $7,321 in grants and scholarships, while Tyler Jr. College following a close second with an average award of $6,459. It is likely that this trend will continue with the introduction of the Freedom to Dream Tuition Waiver piloted strategic initiatives. Third, student debt is another key indicator of student affordability. According to the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Data for the 2022-2023 academic year, the average loan debt accumulated by Delmar College graduates decreased from $13,243 down to $12,101, representing a year-over-year reduction of nearly 9%. Additionally, fewer graduates relied on loans to finance their education as reflected in the year-over-year decline in percentages of graduates with debt from 28% to 26%. Among the 15 community colleges in Texas, Delmar College ranks first for the lowest average student loan debt and third for the lowest percentage of students relying on loans. These results reflect our strategic strategy of maintaining steady, modest changes to student loan charges. Yes, I'm sorry.
I just, I'd love to see that student, that low student debt graphic. I think that's really important and a good, a good point of pride for us. If we're the lowest, our students graduate with the lowest debt of any community college in Texas?
Yes, so that would be, that's published by the coordinating board, I think. And if not, it's in the IPEDS, one of those two reports.
Let's dig in and understand that and-
There are a couple of things that come, go ahead, Dave.
Where'd that newspaper reporter go?
Levi's back there. So, so, one of the factors for consideration is that those that are carrying the more debt, students who carry more debt from community colleges, there's a residential experience that goes with that, that there's some debt incurred. So, we'd have to compare apples to apples when we would do that, and we would look at non-residential to non-residential and/or student to student, because sometimes, it's a mixed bag. But still, but still, a very strong-
Well, if we're the, if we have the lowest, if our student are completing or they just carry?
I think I gave you two data points. One is the first-time first student, the level of loans that they're acquiring. And then, the second point is those students who are graduating or completing, moving on, or they're done. So, there's two data points there. In both cases, we rank the best.
We do exceedingly well.
In terms of the lowest amount of debt.
Regardless of whether there's a residential component or not, if we are rate, if we are ranked the best in both of those categories, we're ranked the best.
Yes. Don't want to, don't want to repeat that.
Don't, don't.
Don't want to repeat that.
Yes.
That's a point of pride.
Bring back the reporter, it really is.
So, I had a question.
Yes.
How many students, did we ever get a total number of how many students are in our non-state refundable programs? Did we ever get a number of how many are in those programs, like journalism and biology? So, we know that, that we're not collecting funds off of them for the, especially the Freedom to Dream kiddos? And I was wondering if anyone tried to reroute them into refundable programs?
That's, it's a tricky, it's a tricky deal. So, the latter part is the tricky part. Identifying those, to answer your first part of the question, the number of students, do we have those, Patricia?
No, but I can get them.
Yeah, we're still-
I just-
That's, that's going to be part of our analysis at the end of the semester because that kind of happened, you know, simultaneously as we're enrolling. So, those, that, that policy just came across, and so-
I literally had just emailed Shashil asking him for the COVs of the graduates.
Yeah, we'll be glad to report it, we'll be glad to share it, absolutely. No, that's going to be a full part of our analysis. And as I was talking about earlier, that's going to be a chink in the armor, for sure. However, how we balance that philosophically, how we balance someone who wants to go into theater and/or another program that is not being funded at the same level is a balance for us. Now, that being said, those programs may not stay there forever, okay? I don't think that is the intent. Those programs- Well, are you talking about the state or the student? Because, both, both. I'm being facetious, Regent Turner, and I apologize. But I'm just saying, because both of them could change their minds. And so, we have to be ready to grapple with them. But philosophically, as a college who are saying, you know, explore your dreams, enabling them, enabling the students to achieve their dreams, and if being the next Kim Frederick is their dream, you know? Yeah, so- Yeah, so, so, I'm, I'm, I know I'm preaching a little bit to the choir, so... Well, when she graduates, no, no, we just need her to graduate and transfer. When she transfers, she'll be, we'll be, we'll be fine, we'll be fine.
We'll point her to the foundation when she graduates and it is, has a successful career.
Well, let you finish up.
Go ahead, Ro.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry. David, you okay for now?
Well, I just wanted to say that my brother had a majored in philosophy and minored in studio art and bachelor's, and then he got a doctorate in policy analysis and has worked for McKinsey and Google and, you know, so, you know, associate's and bachelor's degree level isn't everything, you know, they can recover.
Thank you, Ro. Go ahead and continue.
Okay, moving on?
Yes.
Okay, so, the, so now let's take a closer look at what affordability means for three of our part-time students enrolled in seven credit hours during the fall term. The in-district student charges scaled up very little from 2023 to 2025, from a total of $848,000 to $990. The next important piece of financial data is the financial aid. Even as student charges increased modestly, Pell Grants and supplemental aid were more than enough to offset these costs. After paying for the cost of student charges, students received a financial aid refund ranging from $1,000 to $1,655. These are just a few examples that highlights a couple of key points. Number one, our student charges remain stable and predictable. And number two, financial aid not only makes college affordable, but also often provides students with additional funds to support their needs beyond student charges, and, and, it's a little bit more exponentially with the F2D initiative where we don't take their financial aid and apply it to the charges. So, if there's no questions, we will transition onto the next slide.
You mean?
State Educational Opportunity Grant.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's supplemental, yes.
Supplemental Education Opportunity Grant.
Thank you. So, now let's examine how adjustments to our student charges compared to the inflation rate over the past five years. So, from the fall of 2021 through the fall of 2025, Texas experienced significant cost-of-living increases. During this period, the Consumer Price Index rose from, by more than 22%, with a sharp spike occurring in the 2022 year of 9.3, and that was influenced mainly through the COVID, the pandemic, that whole situation. In contrast, part-time students' charges increased by only 5% over the same period, same five-year period, far below the inflation rate. This outcome reflects a strategic, a strategy of freezing charges in 2021 and 2025, combined with steady and modest adjustments throughout the remaining years. This once again demonstrates the college's strong commitment to keeping higher education affordable and accessible. This also highlights a growing challenge, which is the college's limited ability to offset rising operating costs driven by inflation. This results in a heightened dependency on local property tax revenue and state funding. All right. This next slide examines the relationship between enrollment and unemployment, and how sensitive our enrollment trends are to changes in economic conditions. In general, student enrollment trends tend to move in the same direction as the regionals' unemployment rate. For example, the college typically experiences enrollment declines when the economy strengthens, as evident by the declining unemployment rates. We absorbed this pattern between fall 2016 and 2017. We also saw this fall '28 to fall 2019, and finally, from fall 2020 to 20, fall 2023. On the other hand, enrollment tends to increase as the economy weakens, as indicative by increasing the unemployment rate when individuals seek opportunities to retool their skill sets. We absorbed this parent, pattern between the fall of 2015 and fall 2016, and again, from fall 2024 to fall 2025. It is important to note that during fall 2024 to fall 2025, while the increase of the unemployment rate was negligible, the college reported a record enrollment increase mainly due to the Freedom to Dream Pilot Strategic Initiative. Why I bring up this point right now is that earlier today, we presented the Pilot Within a Pilot Initiative, the continuing education piece where students can come in, capture a quick credential within one semester, and then try to attempt to regain employment. While we are now experiencing, I think, an increase, I think ADP reported an increase in the unemployment rate, which would suggest that the timing of this Pilot Within a Pilot Initiative is perfect, because we're going to help those individuals who are currently experiencing unemployment and are looking to retool their skill sets.
Ro, just real quick on the data, on those bars, the 8,662, are those FTEs? That's that, the head count, or is it a snapshot in time for the fall head count for 2023?
A snapshot in time, just for the fall.
At that particular, at that particular time that this was...
For that fall, yes, sure.
Was that...
Then that's not current, that's not current with what was reported earlier on our...
No, it's 11,000 plus on the head count.
And this focuses only on transferred students. So, it doesn't take into consideration dual credit, it doesn't take into consideration...
Says at the bottom it does. Anyway, I'm going to let you look at that, and would you guys correct that? Because on one hand, we're saying one thing and another, yeah.
Okay.
Those aren't consistent.
Let me take a second look at that, yeah.
It would seem, it would seem that perhaps an FTE number or something like that. We'll have, Gracie, take a look at that.
Yeah.
With us.
All right.
Okay.
I've got a question.
The trend stays the same.
So, I'm hearing you attributing the anticipated increase in students to the weakening economy, but to what extent are you crediting zero tuition to the increase in...
Yes, so, so, that's particularly in the period from 2024 to 2025. As you can see, the unemployment rate is going from 4.4 to 4.5, very slow change there. But the enrollment, whether we use 8,000 or 11,000, is significantly increased, and that was driven, fueled by the F2D initiative itself.
So, coming up with our second cohort, that may be a significant contributor as well to the increase in student population?
To be seen, yes. You know, remember that the, the, the next rendition of the F2D, we're being a little bit more...
Selective.
Defined, yeah. It's being a little bit more refined, and so, we may experience the same level of enrollment we did in the 1.0 because of these additional parameters that we're looking at, a little bit more refined, restrictive. And so, we may not experience the same level, but we will definitely increase enrollment as well. Maybe not to the same level of degree that we experienced this year, but it will be something.
All right. Thank you.
That's just my opinion. My team may have a different perspective.
Well, we'll, we'll make the corrections on these slides and make sure, and/or find out why we use this number more specifically and then move on, but we'll, we'll return that, that data to the board.
Okay. So, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. President, that concludes the presentation. Next step is to come back in February with some options.
So, just really quick, Regents, and I apologize for stepping out as he, as Mr. Garcia got started. Again, this is a time for, for feedback about the overall perceptions ideas. We don't have, we were not making decisions today. That's not the expectation, although that is always your prerogative, but feedback today helps us formulate and prepare for the February meeting where we bring this item back customarily.
Was the governor's letter for one academic year or was it for the biennium?
Biennium, two years.
I thought it was for the biennium, so, so, the request from the governor's office is to not raise student tuition or fees for the second year, this biennium?
Correct. It's for the biennium, and we will just seek feedback and proceed. Some colleges are proceeding with, with raises and so forth. At a time right now, really, as much as anything else with, with what the governor's saying, our consideration really is around philosophically when we're doing a Freedom to Dream type of scenario and so forth, and, and, you know, looking at one group of students differently and treating one group of students differently at this point is to be expected, but at the same time, how do we mitigate against the disparity and/or the distinction of how we treat the students?
Can, can we revisit or somebody review what our action was around the governor's request? I may not be remembering it correctly, but I remember that we had some discussion around it and that there, I thought there was a suggestion that perhaps we review it annually that we didn't agree to.
Yes, that's, that's exactly...
That's my recollection.
It was, it was, it was a two-year outlook, because I know Regent Loeb...
Right.
Was a little, well...
He was not alone in that.
Yes, and he was questioning, and we would say we would come back, and that's what the February opportunity is for.
Great.
But then to recall these kinds of things, but we have the documentation and so forth from the last packet and minutes, everything else to support it. Right now, initially, it's just to, again, I, we, we could have missed this opportunity, but I, I think this is the, one of the most sensitive moves that the, the college has to consider on an annual basis, and I wanted to make sure we had this opportunity just to prepare for these kind of conversations right here.
Thank you.
And the, the governor's platform for next, for his reelection is to have zero school property taxes.
Yep, we'll see how that works out. All right. Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. McDonald is going to do our annual, or semi-annual professional contract review on this spreadsheet that none of us can read without blowing it up on...
We can blow it up a little bit. All right, thank you, Chair. Yes, this is our semi-annual view of our professional contracts. As, I'm just going to go through the list, the color code. So, on the first one, you'll see that we are removing the Collar Johnson Woods contract for external audit services. The board approved to transfer those services to Adamson &amp; Company. So, you'll see Adamson &amp; Company in green, that means it's new. We have two contracts that expired earlier this year. This was last presented in June, so two of them have expired since this was last presented. So, it's Columbia Advisory Group and then Victory Building. And then we have, I'll put, two of our contracts under the IDIQ are expiring this month. We are in the process of extending those a few months into '26, because we do have some work that's ongoing. I am working with the purchasing department so that the first year, we can get the RFQs out again so that we can bring back recommendations once the RFQs go through the process and bring back this pool of IDIQ professional services back to the board in the spring.
Okay. I think that's worked very well to give facilities, that group of folks to work from on the smaller projects, so... Anybody have any questions about our professional services contracts?
Um...
Yes, sir.
Were these like, I, these were IDIQ contracts?
The ones that are in yellow that are, yeah, it's, that whole section is IDIQ? The ones that are in that one section, they're all IDIQ?
Okay, with, I guess my question or comment is, is since we're not doing a lot of building projects per, you know, per se, do we need all of these folks?
We have a lot of ongoing projects in coming out of facilities, which is especially things that happen that are not planned, some emergency needs, but we also have some deferred maintenance projects. So, this gives us the ability to move forward with those as soon as we identify the funds, we identify the priority projects, and we do pull contractors from the IDIQ list for those. So, those are ongoing every year on the deferred maintenance project list.
It may be a different, a different type of list?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Now, I understand.
Yes, sir, thank you. Good job.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Our pending business list, we have strategic, for February's meeting, we have our strategic enrollment management update, quarterly investment reports. We'll talk again about Freedom to Dream, because there's always an update, I think, almost, almost monthly now on our Freedom to Dream.
We'll do some data there, data analysis.
And then we will have that discussion on our tuition and fees program. I'm going to look at the calendar, and we'll talk about that more in calendaring, but no, we're okay. Okay, I was thinking about, oh, we will be gone. So, there will be a group of us gone to NLS in Washington, DC for, so we'll have to look at the date.
I thought we did.
Yeah, for the February meeting.
And so, we'll put a data analysis in there for number 11 for Freedom to Dream, because that'll be our opportunity to come back in February to do an analysis with, with, with the semester under our belt, and then we'll look at the dates.
And so, depending on what the ad hoc committee is able to do between now and agenda prep for the February meeting, we might have a follow-up on the TERS policy.
Okay.
If we want to talk about policy before we enter into another discussion about an actual TERS application.
TERS application for number 12.
Yeah.
And NLS is February 8, 9, and 10, Madam Chair. February 8, 9, and 10.
Yes, which is the second Tuesday.
Correct. I got an email saying that we were having a board meeting on February 3rd.
Can you talk, can you please...
Did we move it up already?
Yeah, I thought we did.
All right, it hadn't changed on my calendar yet. So, expect, expect details from Delia with calendar, calendar invites for 2026.
Always, always keeping January open for a possible, a possible special call meeting.
Okay. All right, we have a consent agenda with approval of minutes and investment and financial reports. Does anything need to be pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Move.
Moved by Mr. Kelly, second by Mr. Krul, or vice versa. Is there any public comment on our consent agenda? No questions, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign, that motion passes unanimously. All right, we'll move on to item number five, which is our annual audit presentation, and Mr. Garcia is going to introduce our contractors. Thank you so much for being with us, and again, sorry for the long meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, before we begin, I want to express my sincere appreciation to Dr. Kathy West, Christina Gonzalez, Jackie Landrum, Roy Gressis, and the entire team for their hard work on this year's year-end audits. Their dedication ensures accuracy, transparency, and compliance in our financial reporting. Today, Adam Miller from Anderson &amp; Company LLC will present the results of this year's financial and compliance audits and share key observations with us. Before he begins, I want to thank, I want to thank Adam and his team for going above and beyond to get the job done. Despite last-minute, last-minute compliance audit changes from the Department of Education, who issued critical guidance at the 11th hour, Mr. Adamson and team, they successfully, Mr. Adamson and team, they successfully completed our annual single audit of the college. We truly appreciate their commitment and professionalism in navigating through these changes.
Good afternoon. Well, I am Adam Miller, and I am a Texas certified public accountant and partner at Adamson &amp; Company, and we're going to go through the results of the 2025 fiscal year-end audit. On our agenda today are three key items. The first is reviewing the independent auditors' reports expressed in the, this year's ACFOR, as well as a high-level financial statement highlight, and then we'll jog through the required communications between my firm and you, the governing board. Similar to Mr. Garcia, I'd like to also start out with a bit of an acknowledgement. I would like to acknowledge the hard work of the Delmar College Finance Team to prepare the annual audit report, as well as their help in retrieving and facilitating documentational evidence required to facilitate not only the, the audit of the financial statements, but as well as our compliance examinations in addition. I'd also like to acknowledge that for the fiscal year ended August 31st, 2024, the college once again received the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. This certificate is awarded to individual governments that go beyond the minimum reporting requirements of US GAAP in the spirit of transparency and full disclosure. This award is presented, represents the highest standard of governmental... This award is presented, represents the highest standard of governmental financial reporting, which certainly is no small achievement. The ACFOR includes, or excuse me, expands cover-to-cover over 150 pages and comprises of four main sections. These include the introductory, financial, statistical, and financial and state award Similarly, we report four independent auditors' reports. The first is on the financial statements as required by US GAAPs or generally accepted auditing standards. The second is a report on internal controls over financial reporting and compliance as required by US GAAPs, so it's generally accepted government auditing standards, very unique. And then the third and fourth reports are on the examination of compliance with major federal and state awards. The independent auditor's report on page 17, our first auditor's report, is, includes and covers the financial statements listed in the slide above, and the purpose of this report is the expression of an opinion as to whether the financial statements adhere to the reporting framework of the college, which is US GAAP. Regarding the financial deliverables, we express an unmodified opinion. An unmodified opinion is often referred to as a clean opinion and conveys to the users that the financial statements and financial information included adheres to the reporting framework without exception. Our second auditor's report is what we call the governmental or Yellow Book Report. This is a unique report to audits conducted in accordance with government auditing standards, and essentially, this report defines and identifies any control deficiencies noted during the performance of an annual audit. Within this report, we disclose that we encountered no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies as a result of the audit procedures performed. On page 137 is our independent auditor's report on the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. In this independent auditor's report, we express an opinion on whether the college adhered to the compliance requirements of its major federal programs. Within this report, we express an unmodified opinion, meaning we noted no instances of non-compliance with major federal awards. And then similarly, on page 147, we express a similar opinion on the compliance of the state awards. And once again, within this report, we express an unmodified opinion, meaning we noted no instances of non-compliance with major state awards. Sort of financial statement overview with the statement of net position. And the statement of net position is a point-in-time financial statement, and it's similar to a corporate-type balance sheet. This financial statement reports the permanent accounts of the college, and the permanent accounts includes the college's assets, deferred outflows, liabilities, deferred inflows, and net position. This financial statement indicates that for 2025, the college remains in a capital-intensive period reflecting continuous construction and renovation efforts across heritage and Windward campuses. You'll also notice a gradual directional decline of total debt as the college beats principal obligations on these debts each year. To better convey these associations, I prepared a graphical representation of the college's assets and liabilities over the past four years. The college is capital, is a capital-intensive organization with the majority of its assets consisting of capital assets such as real property, including land, buildings, improvements, fixtures and furniture, vehicles and other equipment. Resource is essential to its daily operations and administrative functions. These capital assets represent the largest component of the college's total assets and have continued to increase on a year-over-year basis, net of accumulating depreciation, reflecting ongoing investment in the infrastructure and long-term operational capacity. You will note that liquidity is bifurcated and managed between cash and investment holdings, including commercial paper and US Treasuries. The relationship of these two lines, so the red and blue line, representing the balancing of liquidity for operations as well as maximizing return on available funds. You'll also note that other categories of assets, including accounts receivable, have remained relatively stable over the period presented. Regarding the college's liabilities, you'll note the largest component of liabilities includes long-term debt, which is declining each year as principal is repaid. You'll also note that, note the relative continuity of the other liability categories over their respective timeframe presented. Regarding the statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in net position, this financial statement reports the results of operations over a 12-month period and is similar to a corporate-type statement of income. This financial statement reports the temporary accounts of the college, which includes its revenues and expenses. In aggregate, the financial statements reflect a year-over-year increase in the college's net position. This increase primarily results from the increase in many of the college's revenue sources, net of increases of operating expenses. With the revenues, you'll note that ad valorem taxes continue to be the largest source of revenues and have increased approximately 11% over the prior year. State appropriations, which is the second-largest source of revenues of the college in 2025, similarly experienced year-over-year growth. The third-largest category of revenues for 2025 included federal grants, which have changed notably over the years presented. Such funds declined after fiscal year 2022 with COVID-19 programs winding down. And with that said, you'll note an approximate 17% increase in federal grants in 2025, which is largely related to increases in Pell Grants awarded. When we look at operating expenses, you'll note a year-over-year increase across major categories. Instruction remains the largest component of the college's expenses each year, with this year trending approximately 8% higher than the prior year. Much of this year-over-year increase relates to increases in employee salaries and in related benefits. We also noted increases in student service expense, which related to furnishing of the Memorial Building and White Library. Other notable increases relates to scholarships and fellowship due to largely increases in Pell Grants awarded. Regarding the statement of federal expenditures, included in this slide are the major programs tested as part of our compliance examination. The major federal programs relevant for the 2025 examination included the financial aid cluster, Title V cluster, and the Procurement Technical Assistance of Business Firms grant. Our testing resulted in approximately an 86.7% coverage of all federal expenditures for the fiscal year ended 2025. Regarding the state expenditures, our major program selection included the Texas Educational Opportunity Grant Program, and our testing coverage approximated 62% of all state awards for the fiscal year ended 2025. Next, we'll address the required communications. Sorry, I think I skipped ahead. This slide addresses the auditor's responsibilities, which include expressing an opinion about whether the financial statements prepared by management are fairly stated in conformity with US GAAP, obtaining reasonable assurance as a basis of our opinion, and communicating significant findings if they are noted during the results of the audit. This slide addresses management's responsibilities, which include management is responsible for establishing and maintaining internal controls, ensuring the fair presentation of the financial statements, and implementing fraud prevention programs. This slide addresses and highlights the significant accounting estimates included in the financial statements of the college. These estimates relate to the net pension and other post-employment benefits liabilities. These estimates are actuarially determined and include several subjective inputs, and accordingly, these positions can fluctuate on a year-over-year basis. Disclosures of these estimates can be found in Note 11 and Note 16 in accordance with GASB 68 and 75 respectively. Other required communications in this slide indicate that we've, we have obtained the written representations necessary to release our independent auditor's reports, and there were no internal control deficiencies noted, and there were no indications of fraud or illegal actions noted during our audit procedures. We are pleased to report that we had no significant difficulties encountered during the audit, and there were no disagreements with management on financial reporting or other matters. And additionally, we identified no corrections or uncorrected misstatements, either individually or in the aggregate, that impacted the fairness of the financial statements as a whole. These facts reflect a smooth audit process and strong alignment with management in preparing accurate financial statements. On behalf of myself and the team that I represent, it is our distinct pleasure in continuing our work with the college. At this time, we'd be happy to address any questions or any matters for further consideration.
Thank you very much for being with us, Mr. Miller. Do we have any questions for Adam? We will receive, or we have typically received the full CAFER in February or upon request, or how are we going to distribute that this year?
So the, the audit reports will be released to the finance team this afternoon, and we'll compile the final ACFOR tomorrow morning.
Gotcha.
At which point, we'll complete the federal audit clearinghouse upload, as well as coordinations with the other respective entities receiving the reports. So the financial will be available by the end of this week.
Perfect. Thank you.
So Dr. West can also talk about when the report will be published and what other ways this information is available to the board and to the public.
Because I knew there are several of us who are just waiting for it to put under our Christmas trees.
Yes.
Ruined the surprise.
There we go. Kathy is going to take personal offense to that. She worked so hard on it.
Well, it's a labor of love for me, I will tell you that. No, Adam's going to give me the, the letters today, I'm going to drop them in, I'll get it printed. Anybody that would love to have a copy before Christmas, I'll be glad to deliver it to you, and it is also available online as soon as we get it out there on the college's website.
So. Thank you very much, thanks. The, you know, thank you for highlighting those important findings and whether or not there are any disagreements or issues, and so for those of us who are not CPAs, we certainly appreciate that, that kind of a report to us. So congratulations, Mr. President, and Mr. Garcia, and your whole teams for.
To the team.
For successful audit, thank you.
Thank you, Adam.
All right, oh, I'm sorry, we do have to take action, sorry about that. We do need a motion to accept, thank you, so moved, Mr. Loeb, second by Mr. Krul, to accept the, the ACR, the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for fiscal year ending August 31st, 2025. Is there any more question from the board? Is there any public comment on this item? Surely somebody wants to comment on the, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say, raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign, that motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so now we're going to come back to the tuition, student tuition and fee waiver program to consider it for this next fiscal year, and we're going to ask Ms. Patricia Benavides Dominguez to give us an overview.
As we heard this morning, you heard the, the first round of the Freedom to Dream. With this presentation, where the four areas of discussion are listed there on this slide presentation, which will end with Mr. Garcia providing the fiscal note, and, and we'll go over all these points listed here. So what's new about freedom to, what is the same about freedom to dream, I'm sorry? The freedom to dream, the details above remain the same, all students, we will still be working with high school graduating seniors, adult learners, GED achievers, students living in our taxing district, maintaining the 2.0 GPA. Students must be enrolled full-time, minimum of 12 semester credit hours, and students need to commit by signing a contract and meeting with their advisor. What is new?
Just to save time, I don't think you have to repeat every one of the slides, so.
Say high level, high level kind of each word.
So for, for what's new, we're requiring the, the graduating seniors that come in with dual credit, have a 2.0 GPA, students that have prior college work, no more than 18 attempted hours, and we're adding continuing education to the program so that students can choose ICLCs or WSAs.
So from a fiscal note perspective, just want to say that they're really projections, they're estimates. The number has been based on, on the latest information that we have from the piloted program, and we're building upon that. I'm always getting new information, information on, on student graduates, and so we will continue to see regular updates on the numbers as we get actual and better informations as we move along. If anything, just know that we have projections, I think they're very conservative, and with that, that said, what's changed differently is, my colleague just mentioned, is that we're pulling some lowers a little bit differently in this 2.0 rendition where it's going to be a little bit more refined, a little bit more restricted, a little bit more of a narrow number of students coming in, and yes, we understand and we are aware that there are some marketing and outreach initiatives that's going to continue to grow in the, in the coming months, coming years, as we continue this program. And so if anything, going from 1,000 to a potential outcome of students of 1,500, the margins get better as it grows. But again, it all depends on the enrollment patterns of our student. That's really a big, big emphasis on that, that those numbers will change as we know, get better information on how students are enrollment, progressing, and what have you.
Just as a reminder to those who may be piping in electronically and are watching this after the fact, we had a workshop where we discussed this item in depth and the like. But that being said, again, the upshot of all of this, Regents, is that freedom to dream will be more restrictive. We have comprehensive plans, where individuals will be taken care of just as individuals, and the team is ready, positioned, and excited to do as such, and we will see different outcomes. We think we will, we will bring in a group that is quantitatively more prepared for freedom to, to, to accept college-level classes, and then we'll have a stratification of those students who are, whose readiness is, you know, at different levels, and we'll be ready for every one of them. Again, we're not going to let everybody, it's going to be a lot of whoa, not no, but whoa, and it's going to be up to those students, and we're going to ask those students to step up and give a commitment that probably they haven't seen before in many cases, and so there's going to be high expectations of our students. But before, because, because, because of time and so forth, do you, do you all have any thoughts, ideas, carryover questions from this morning that we need to jump on before we spend a lot of time presenting? Move to approve staff recommendation.
There's a motion to approve the staff recommendation to proceed with 2026, 2027 Freedom to Dream cohort. We have a second by Mr. Kelly. Are there other board questions or comments? Dr. Turner?
I know, I'm sorry that I missed, maybe I can just have a conversation with Eskima afterwards.
Absolutely.
I just had a couple of questions.
All day, whatever time.
That's funneling into this.
Yes, I'll be glad to answer those, Regent Turner.
I'd like to make a request as we move forward and look at, again, the, the plan versus the actual, as that, as that data analysis happens. We, we understand we've got two cohorts where it makes sense to look at consolidated information, that's fine, but let's make sure that we are all understanding the assumptions and whether or not those assumptions are proving valid, and if they're not, what are we learning from that, what are we changing? Because we, again, we know that we're flying the plane as we're designing it, so there's, there's not a criticism in that, we just, we really want to understand how it's working and what we're learning from the process.
Absolutely. Early leading indicators are that the theory is holding, holding sound, and so we'll be checking drop rates and all of those. I've got a unofficial report yesterday that things remain very, very solid in terms of persistence practices and so forth. We remain optimistic. We'll come back to you in February with the data analysis.
There's no other questions or comments from the board? Is there any public comment on this item? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
My dental hygienist will be very happy because she cornered me at my last appointment and said, "Are y'all going to do it again next year? I want my daughter to participate." So, she'll be very happy.
Give her my, give her my personal self.
That's right. All right, Regents, we're going to hold items seven and eight until after closed session because there are some questions from, for legal counsel going into those. So, at this point in time, we're going to go into closed session under Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with legal counsel, Texas Government Code 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development, and 551.074A1 regarding personnel matters. And the time is 4:12. Let's take a quick break for those that need to, and we will meet in the closed session All right, the board has come out of closed session at 5:21 PM. We're going to go ahead and start the discussion, our presentation, on item number seven. We've got a couple of board members here coming back in, but we're going to start the, there's no action out of closed session, so we're going to start with Ms. Tammy McDonald, who's going to talk about agenda item number seven.
Yes, thank you, Chair. In compliance with new requirements under SB 2615, which is restrictions on telework for higher education employees, that was enacted in the 89th regular legislative session, there was a brand-new policy that was in your packet. Also, in compliance with some legislation from that same session, SB 37, we're continuing with our policy to comply under 37. We'll be presenting to the boards of HR-related topics under 37, so those will be presented. And then, we will also be presenting, which is to comply with HB, excuse me, SB 37, the topics that are required now to do with curriculum and academic programs and program review. So, we'll be taking those three sections as A, B, and C, and then you would be taking action on them individually. Okay? So, what I would like to do now is, I'm going to, the policies were what I call courtesy copies, because when we put policies forward that are to comply with legislation, then we send courtesy copies to our chairs of all of our councils, because basically, it's, we need to follow the law and comply with the new legislation. So, those were sent out to them last week. Under the curriculum and program review, we did have the chair of the faculty council, the chair of the curriculum committee was in a work group. I do want to acknowledge that work group on the policy work, it was Jerry Henry, Dr. Howcomb, Dr. Sambi, Jessica Alanese, and then Dell Anderson. So, we all had little work groups and work teams on different parts of these policies. So, I do want to acknowledge their help and their assistance in this. And what I'm going to do right now, I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Jerry Henry, who is our executive director of HR in Perro, and he is going to go over the telework with you.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Madam Chair, Regents, Dr. Eskemia. First policy we have is the telework of remote work. It's B558, and deals with SB 2615 and amends the Texas Education Code, Section 51992. I'm not going to read the entire policy here, even though Ms. McDonald said I had an hour to do this. I'm not going to bore you with all that. But basically, this is verbatim out of the SB 2615. Just note that the last B558.4, appropriate HR personnel are responsible for establishing operational procedures for adherence to this policy and the Education Code. Just so you know, we do have those policies in place. We are in adherence with both the Senate bill and the educational code. Any questions on that?
Thank you. So, I'll move to, I think we do have the policies. So, here's the one that Mr. Henry just went over. So, I'm going to go over the next section, which is the SB 37. So, I took B2.3.1, and I added some sections so that we can be in compliance with the new requirements under 37, which is to do with board governance. Okay. Okay, I think you can read all that now. So, just as a reference to remember when we present these, the B sections are board policies, and that does require your approval. And so, the other policy work that Dr. Howcomb will be reviewing, there are some A sections, and those are provided to you as notification of revision. So, you'll be voting on the B sections. A sections are for notification only. Okay? So, under 37, we added three sections, and they're all in accordance with Article 2, of course, the Education Code 51.352. The first section is that the governing board, I'm just going to highlight some of the areas. Like I said, this is verbatim with the exception of one area, I'll get in section B, that we did add some parameters based on some information from the board. So, the governing board of an institution of higher education can approve or deny the hiring of an individual for the position of provost or deputy associate or assistant provost by each institution under the control of the board, and that the board instructs the appropriate college administration to develop procedures for this added board responsibility. So, if there's anyone that is to be hired in any of those positions, it would be coming to the board, so they can approve or deny that hire. And section B, this is also under the governing board. It is verbatim, so it says, "A governing board may overturn any hiring decision for the position of vice president or dean made by the administration of a campus under the board's control or management, control and management." Again, that's right out of the bill, language out of the bill. And the actions by the governing board under this subsequent shall be implemented by the institution through appropriate action with respect to the relevant hiring decision at issue, so the board can rescind an offer, terminate employment, or terminate an employment contract. Now, the next section down here is something that was added through the guidance from the CEO and the board and general counsel. So, appropriate college administration shall develop procedures for this added board responsibility that includes the requirement of a minimum of three regents to request placing such action on a meeting agenda within 10 calendar days of notification of acceptance of a hiring offer. And then, we're editing this section. The CEO will notify the board of an offer acceptance through the general counsel. So, I want to make sure that you note that edit as you move forward, and we'll vote on this in just a little bit. Okay? And then, section C, excuse me, that's just another added responsibility to the president, that's why I put it under this board policy. It says that the president will conduct evaluations for individuals, and then it lists the positions. There's some that the president already does, but it expanded it down to some of the dean Anyone in a leadership position that oversees curriculum or student affairs. And then, if for some reason that the president/CEO decides not to renew someone or continue their employment, then the president does have to bring that decision to the board. So, any questions on this section?
I'd like to ask you to strike a minimum of three regents, because we would not want a maximum over what might be open meetings violation. So, the requirement of three regents to request.
Yes, ma'am. Strike.
No, we can't.
No. You're going to require three, okay. So, it includes the requirement of three regents to request placing such action.
Do we need to include in here how the regents would make their request to put it on the board agenda?
And that would be something, since the notification will come through the CEO out of the general counsel's office, his instructions from when he provides the notification could come from how that should take place.
So, the notification would go back to general counsel?
Yes.
Got it?
And if there's needed clarity in either the policy or the A procedures, then you can add that to it at an appropriate point in time, if you need clarification or additional steps.
Yes, and this takes effect January 1st.
Okay. Any other questions before we move on from this section?
And then, I'm going to hand the next section over to Dr. Howcomb, that's related to curriculum
All right, so, as we know, Senate Bill 37 has changed some aspects of program review and curriculum. So, there are various wording changes in our existing policy and timelines that need to be changed, and that's what you're seeing that has been stricken. And as Ms. McDonald said, we did work with the faculty council chair and curriculum committee chair and others in going through these policies. So, there's a variety of different areas of policy. One area indicated that faculty in the past had full responsibility of, or a lot of responsibility for the curriculum. Now, they make recommendations in fundamental areas such as curriculum, but they still have primary responsibility for subject matter, methods of instruction, et cetera, that you see in that B2.5. We are changing the date of the program review. Typically, the Board of Regents had approved or adopted the instructional program review policy in January of 1985, but now, we're saying January 1, 2026. That's what's required in Senate Bill 37. Now, we are, we have already, we have policy in which we always review our programs within a five-year cycle, so that's not a big shift. However, the CEO will make a recommendation, and you will need to vote. And so, you will review and approve. In the past, I've presented the program review report, the five-year, and you've listened to that, but you haven't had to approve it, so you will need to approve it in the future. And then, we have established calendars for instructional program review in September, but now, we do need to do it by December 1, so that you do know what the new calendar is. Let me scroll down a little bit. Well, hmm. There we go. And then, we've changed some of the makeup, not significantly, of the membership for the instructional program review committee, and you can see that it's made of at least one faculty member not in the program, but we do need program faculty, and we're appropriate community members, former present students or advisory committee members, especially for our workforce areas. And then, we're changing on A. Of course, this is an A policy that is for your notifications, 6.11.5, and so, the criteria for assessment of the instructional program is changing where we would indicate, we're doing a data-informed study of the program, analyzing responsiveness to the institutional mission and objectives, student learning outcomes, post-completion success, program objectives, and effectiveness of resource allocations, which we have included in past. But you see, we've crossed out several of the other categories of the eight criteria. And then, I still, as CAO, have oversight responsibility for instructional program review, but once again, you will be voting on approval of that program review as we do it in that five-year cycle. So, that is pretty much it, and we will be doing a report to you if we make any changes to the general education courses, to report that one time per year for any changes to that Gen Ed. And then, once again, the program review will still be on that five-year cycle that we have already implemented previously. Do you have any questions at this time?
Gen Ed defined as?
Typically, it's core.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was asked earlier.
Yes.
I said, "No." I wasn't.
Well, we do have some courses that.
Exactly.
Here, we've pretty much identified our Gen Ed would be core, but yes, there are a few other courses that are general education courses that are not in the core.
Outside the 42.
Yes.
Outside the 42, it's pretty expansive, almost a full associate degree in some areas.
Some areas, yes.
Yeah, so, it's going to be, it's not going to be clean with just the 40. Okay, so, just duly note, we'll make a note, I just came up in a conversation earlier and.
Yes, it gets a little tricky.
It does.
Yeah. We try to get the students to take, like, in the AAS degrees, they're required to take five Gen Eds, we try to get them to do the core in those, because, you know, if they do decide to transfer later, it is better for them.
And that the core curriculum being defined, we're going to have to go through a lot of definitions, more to come later. Yep.
Well, core curriculum, they're working on at state level. They have an advisory committee, and they're re-looking at the criteria to determine what cores should be. So, they're working on that committee, which won't finish till the end of '26. Okay? Any other questions?
Thank you, Dr. Howcomb.
You have more authority over our curriculum, yeah?
Well, what I appreciate is it doesn't change our process on program review. It adds an ad infinitum for approval, but you all have done a really, really great job at program review, and so, that's exciting to me, is.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
I'm going to ask Dr. Eskemia and Delia to make sure that anything that is coming to the board that we know now, we update our annual calendar on things that are going to be coming to the board, just so we have, for planning purposes, understanding of when those things happen.
Through this, somebody's taking notes. Ms. Delia had to step out.
Oh, yes. Thank you. Thank you, Tammy.
It's perfect. Well, I was going to ask you, because it's going to fall on your purview anyway, so we can align the planning calendar with all these changes. Thank you.
We will get those dates, too. Typically, we like to do program review in March, but we'll get with her on that.
So, Tammy gave us kind of a verb, an additional sentence at the end of the provision on the employment of faculty and other employees of the district. So, with that change, are there any other questions or comments? Is there a motion to present as approved?
Motion to approve.
I'm so sorry. You have a question first?
Well, you can second, then I'll say it.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Turner.
Yeah, I would just like to say, while I'm going to vote for this motion, simply because I think we have to obey state law, I don't think that these are changes that are necessary for us, but I do appreciate staff, faculty, senior leadership in helping us navigate through this, even though it has created some additional work. And I just want to make sure that any of those folks don't think that we feel like you aren't doing your job satisfactorily, and that we need to somehow look over your shoulder, because I do not think that's the belief of this board. But in some ways, our hands are tied in terms of following new state law passed by our legislature. So, that's where we are.
Agreed.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you for stating that, Regent Avery. I think we all agree with the sentiment that we have profound, by proof of today's meeting earlier in the day, we have profound faith and confidence in our faculty and staff and our leadership that has been doing great work, great work for 90 years.
Thank you, Regents.
Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of adoption as presented, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. That motion passes unanimously. We are going to table item number eight and look for a potential special-called meeting in January to consider that. Our last item on the agenda is looking at calendar. We do have our season celebration on Friday and commencement. If you are not planning to attend commencement, please let Delia know. And then, winter break begins, well-deserved winter break begins for our faculty and staff on December 18. We will look at a special-called meeting in January, and our board date, and I apologize for my earlier confusion, our board date in February is going to be on Tuesday, the 3rd. Seeing nothing else on our agenda, we stand.
Madam Chair?
I'm sorry, sir.
Yeah. If I could have 30 seconds?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, I was presenting yesterday at the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board Higher Edge Conference. Some of you have been to that before, and I was asked to sit on a panel to train new trustees, all of you went through this, on effective and ethical leadership. And I just want to tell you how proud I was to brag on your practices here. I talked about Regent Avery and Regent Turner's work on the Ethics Committee. I talked about the extra, the extra documents that you sign every year after the annual ethics update, and I talked about how ethical leadership begins from the top. And remarks, apparently, I'm getting. And remarks, apparently, I'm getting, the commissioner was there in the room watching the training, and the general counsel, Doug Brock, for the Texas Higher Education Corps of Neighbor was the moderator, and he's been emailing me, telling me, very well-received, people here really appreciated your comments, and so, it's because of you all. So, I wanted to leave you all with that for the year.
Thank you very much. From the regents to all of our staff, we wish you the happiest of holidays, and we hope you have a great winter break. Thank you all very much. We stand adjourned at 5:41 PM.